I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July 22, 2020. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, let's see. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself. Alright, the motion is passed and we will begin with board reports. Rita?
Uh, nothing to report.
Alright. Uh, we had a MAB board meeting last week. Um, just basically, I think we kinda went round robin with everyone from most of the counties about what their school opening plans were and, um, what the update was at the state board meeting the prior week, which really didn't have a lot of information. So, that's about all I have. Kathy?
Uh, I attended virtually, um, a meeting of the Council for the Advancement of School-Based Health Centers on which I serve on behalf of MAB. Um, not only have we been discussing um, the work that we had previously been doing, but, um, we have also put together a pandemic plan, um, to be able to provide, uh, to a number of organizations. So, that will be coming forward quite shortly.
Mary?
Good morning, everyone. I attended two virtual meetings, the Maryland Associations of Boards of Education Conference Committee meeting and the SMCPS Virtual Town Hall meeting. Both were very informative and I know the public was glad to hear what our plans are regarding the school system. Thank you.
Jim?
Uh, I was invited, uh, for private visit at the library by Michael Blackwell and it was very, very impressive, uh, facility. Uh, the new library, I'm not sure when it's gonna open to the public, but, uh, the architect took great advantage of, uh, lighting, um, and, uh, I don't wanna go into too much detail, there's, uh, I believe five private, uh, rooms that you have the ability to, uh, use a copying room. You can take, uh, eight and sixteen millimeter film and, uh, convert it to CDs. Um, the, um, next to the Garby, it's right next to the Garby Center. I wasn't able to see the Garby Center. Uh, I'm, I'm zooming, by the way, at National Harbor because yesterday I went, uh, to the Arlington National Cemetery to bury, uh, one of my relatives, has a number of relatives there, and, uh, all I can say is it's a very, very humbling, uh, experience to see the thousands, tens of thousands of, uh, our, uh, men and women that have served our country. So, that's all I have.
Nagina?
So, over the past week, I have a meeting with different committees regarding the recovery plans, uh, for schools. Uh, last week, I virtually attended the MSDE Recovery Plan Stakeholder meeting where different aspects of the recovery plans in Roblox were discussed. Just yesterday, I met with the Slack Steering Committee alongside Dr. Marr and Dr. Smith to ensure that the student perspective is taken into account for the plan for SMCPS. And that's all.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Scott?
Uh, so, a great deal of virtual work has gone on. Obviously, we did the, we did the town hall, um, been engaged with conversations with the other superintendents across the state of Maryland as they present their opening of school plans and then go back and revise their opening of school plans based on feedback from, um, employee groups and the boards and, and so forth. And that, that'll be the discussion that we're engaged in today. Um, I do wanna take this opportunity to, um, to present a little bit of the, the, one of the things that, a lot of things happen, some things happen, um, behind the scenes. Uh, we have made a change to the, um, the organizational chart for St. Mary's County Public Schools to best position, uh, our work this year and going forward. It's not a great deal of, of difference. Most of it's just really a visual. In the middle of the organizational chart, we have the deputy superintendent and reporting, uh, through the deputy superintendent to the superintendent, we have the chief of staff or the office of HR, uh, the chief of safety and security, that's, uh, Mike Wyant, that's the Safety and Security Office and, which has played an incredible role in kind of coordinating the, um, our work with county government and with the Health Department and related services. And, um, we are re-titling a department to best have it emphasize our, our work of the last several years, our work right now and our work going forward. Um, and that's, uh, it had been, uh, the department had been called the Office of Supplemental School Programs under the direction of the Executive Director Kelly Hall. Uh, we've had a great many conversations and we're re-titling it to be the Office of Equity Engagement and Early Access. Uh, it'll still maintain a great deal of its primary function, which is, uh, Title I and Head Start and the Judy Center and Pre-K Programs, but it will also include, um, Ms. Dillahunt and, as our Coordinator of Educational Equity. So, uh, really, organized in that one office are gonna be a great many of our conversations about how we ensure all of our students get the very best start educationally and emotionally and socially with St. Mary's County Public Schools, how we mitigate gaps before they become, uh, larger, and how we ensure that we are offering equity for all of our students. And why that really, the biggest change is that, um, every single week, I have, we have a cabinet group, a group of people that meet on Monday and we're now meeting, over pandemic, we've been, we've been meeting pretty much every single day virtually. Um, now that we're getting a little bit more settled into the routines of this new reality, we meet every one, uh, every Monday and every Wednesday and I interact with eight people specifically. And the eight people now represent pretty much all facets of the, of the, of St. Mary's County Public Schools. From, uh, the incredible work of Dr. Marr as the Chief Strategic Officer, talking about how we put together all our plans, we're gonna talk about the recovery plan, um, that's really under his office and, uh, auspices and work. Um, the Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services and HR, Ms. Tammy McCourt, uh, making sure that we have the resources to do what we need to do to navigate the myriad of ever-changing rules and regulations with the money that we know, the money that we may be available and the money that we are spending. Um, obviously, the deputy superintendent with, uh, Dr. Montgomery who just is, and it just is at the center of, of so much of our work. The chief of staff, that's Dale Farrell, who is working diligently on behalf of all of our students overseeing HR and his role has been, um, really critical. And as we talked today about options for staff and the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act and ADA opportunities, um, so much of that is coordinated through, uh, Dr. Farrell and also through, uh, Leslie Fancella. Uh, chief of safety and security, again, Mike Wyant. Um, the chief, uh, equity engagement and early access, that's Ms. Kelly Hall. Kelly Hall will be part of cabinet two times a week to talk about all of the elements that, that are going on with, uh, getting our kids started early and equitably. Um, the chief counsel, which you approved through the consent agenda, we will have a, um, a new, uh, lawyer working on behalf of the school system starting in August. And then, of course, Dr. Walker, who, um, you'll be hearing from later today, talking about all those supporting services, all the ways in which we have to make sure that we support our staff, um, to do the incredibly educational work that we do every single day. So, um, I'm using this opportunity just to let you know there had been modifications. We are in every facet of the organization seeing how we need to best align resources to address the challenges that we have. This also ties into the, um, the joint resolution that I signed with Dr. Brewster and with Sheriff Cameron to talk about putting an equity lens to our organizational structures within this, within our organizations and saying, what can we, how can we best put resources to the tasks that are, that are most pressing? And so, this is one of the very first things that we're doing to kind of realign that, that, that group and those people. Um, all of this is with the existing positions that we have. It's just having them fall to the work a little differently. So, uh, with that, um, I'm gonna be spending probably a lot of time talking today, so, uh, I'm, uh, get used to the sound of my voice. Um, we, uh, we have a, a, a presentation to do today on our recovery plan and when we get to it, I need you to understand that, um, we, when we started our recovery work, two and a half months ago, things looked very differently. Very different. When we in earnest pulled people together in, uh, late May and early June, things looked different. As they went through their work through June and into July, things looked different. And what we've seen in the last week and a half, um, really put our, put our work into, uh, we need to put our work into context. I wanna respect all the work that's done, but I also wanna tell you that what's being presented today is just a snapshot and it's not the final product because we still have many more things to consider. So, with that, I'm gonna conclude my report and we may move on to the next items and I'm sure you'll, you'll be back with me when we talk about our recovery plan.
Okay. Alright, we have no recognition to public hearing. Uh, we have public comment. Jill? I'm gonna still read my public comment statement. Are you, are you gonna come up here to the podium? Okay. Alright, so you can make your way forward as I read this. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider but not comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about, uh, individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest should be directed to the superintendent. We will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since it is outside the scope of public comment. Please keep in mind that the Board sits as an appellate body and both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. So, in order to maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding student, individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented. You must sign at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you have written statements, please provide them to Peg and she will distribute them."
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's really great to be with you. In this, our new normal, uh, even our public comment had to evolve to a new normal. And we have been working together with our partners, SMCPS, all through this, the associations have. And once again, we needed to have flexibility. And Dr. Smith and Chairperson Bailey, Ms. Weaver, Ms. Allen, Ms. Washington, Mr. Weaver, thank you so much for your flexibility. Uh, public comment is something that is honored and treasured by our employees and our members. And, um, we decided because in this new normal, not everybody can come in and read their statement, that I would read into the record their public comments. Um, you might wanna get a cup of coffee. Uh, I have twenty-five of them and, uh, I love a Board of Ed that's gonna let me read all twenty-five. I have practiced them for the most part, except the ones I received this morning.
Where we kept receiving them throughout the evening.
Okay, and they're including those two. Um, and, uh, I may have to have a sip of water, but I'm gonna try to go, uh, through them as quickly as I can. Um, and I appreciate, again, your flexibility, but at some point, Chairwoman, uh, Bailey, if we need to, like, take a break or if I need to take a minute, can I?
That's fine.
Okay.
You just let me know.
Very good. Alright, so, we're gonna get going. Thank you so much, once again. The first public comment is by Ms. Jessica Stallings. "Teachers are taught early in their training about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, which puts forward that people are motivated by five basic categories of needs. At the base is the physiological, food, shelter, clothing, sleep. The second tier is safety, health and personal security, among others. In this difficult time, there are many who are struggling to maintain these basic functions. As the SMCPS community gears up for the possible return to school buildings, I want to take this time to remind the Board of Education and Administration that without the basic needs met, learning cannot be achieved. It is the second tier that we need to talk about, safety and personal security. In the past five months, safety and personal security has come in the form of a correctly worn face mask. There are SMCPS staff and students with immunocompromised individuals living in their homes. If not themselves, if not themselves immunocompromised, all SMCPS employees and students have the right to a safe environment and the correct wearing of masks should be a no compromise for the district as a whole. Students who do not wear a mask correctly, even after having been educated on how to wear the mask correctly when they return to the school buildings, should not be allowed to tamper with the safe school environment that we are trying to create. If a student does not wear their mask correctly on school property, they should not be allowed on school property. I know that we have to be flexible, but when an airborne illness threatens all of our safety, the masks are our greatest defense aid from learning, aid from learning online, aside from learning online, excuse me. Teachers, staff and students want to be in school. The entire school community has the right to be in a safe learning environment where masks are worn correctly so that we can fulfill our needs to be safe and to move through our next tier of needs, which includes love, belonging, self-esteem and self-actualization through learning and teaching. Ms. Brittany Kirker. "I am a teacher with St. Mary's County Public Schools and I would like to advocate for a virtual return to school. As a teacher and a parent, my top priority is the safety and well-being of all children. Given the current state of the pandemic, I strongly feel that a virtual return is in the best interest of students and their families. Children may, may not get as sick as frequently as others, but some children do get sick and there have even been documented deaths. The death of one child in St. Mary's County would be too many. There are things that we teachers can do to look out for our students' mental health and emotional well-being while teaching virtually. It is much harder to look out for their physical health in a face-to-face environment. Additionally, the added pressures of the safety protocols, which may not be developmentally appropriate depending on the age of the child, create an in-person atmosphere of fear and anxiety. While children learn better in person under normal circumstances, they do not learn as well when anxious or stressed. Masks, physical distancing and cleaning procedures may well create an anxious learning environment that negates the benefits of in-person learning. Finally, most daycare providers remain closed. If they are still closed when school returns, I may need to reconsider my employment if I cannot find care for my daughter." Ms. Liz Jokely. "As COVID-19 continues to spread across our country at an increasing and alarming rate, now is not the time to send students and staff back into school buildings to interact with each other and spread the virus. As I watch and read the news every day, health officials call on us to stay home, not interact with groups of people, only go into stores quickly and when absolutely necessary, et cetera. They are calling on citizens across our country to help stop the spread. Requiring, requiring us to return back to our school buildings at this time to expose ourselves to hundreds or even thousands of other people and their families is doing the exact opposite of what is needed from all citizens at this time. Calling us back to do things that we absolutely can do safely from our home is completely unnecessary. I cannot understand the purpose. To me, it seems that this decision would harm, not help, our communities. It would also put our eventual return in jeopardy as teachers and staff and kids would become ill, which would further hamper the timeline of a safe return. You know teachers want to get back in our rooms teaching our kids as soon as it is safely possible. However, we are also very informed and educated and can plainly see that this safe time has not yet arrived. While we all had planned to be back this fall, that plan did not come to fruition. The virus has not been contained and we all know how quickly any illness spreads throughout our buildings. We cannot even imagine being called upon to unnecessarily face a deadly virus in those buildings." Mr. Tim McGowan. "My concern is for my colleagues with children of their own. How can they be expected to return to work even as their own children are not permitted to do so?" Ms. Erin House. "I recently returned to teaching after taking time off to stay at home with my kids. I returned because they would be in school with me and limited childcare was needed. If we are required to teach from our classrooms in the fall regardless if there are students there or not, my teaching salary barely covers full-time care for my three children. Please consider providing something for staff children or whether it is truly necessary for all teachers to teach from their rooms." Ms. Laura Titterman. "This is a difficult time for everyone. We are trying to figure out how to get the learning done while keeping everyone safe. Thanks for giving me this chance to comment. I believe that all high school students should be on virtual schooling for the fall. I am a high school teacher and routinely have over thirty students in my classroom. I do not feel that I can keep myself or my students safe from exposure to the virus that causes COVID-19. During the spring 2020 COVID-19 online continuity of learning, uh, I had ninety-two percent of my students working successfully online. I taught advanced students as well on gra, as well as on grade level. There were a few issues when students realized that the grade didn't count, but I believe that will be resolved if students know they will be accountable for the work. I believe online learning is the safest way to teach at this time. Some ideas. Those high school students who do not have access to computers or the necessary support at home, would be able to go to school and use the computer labs. It would not have to be a full day every day, maybe something like eight AM to two PM Monday, Wednesday, or eight AM, two PM Tuesday, Thursday. Then would we be able to check on them and they could get lunch. The classroom teacher would still be responsible for instruction and grading since they would be working the same program as the students at home. At school, the pair of educators and caseworkers can help their assigned students and qualified subs could man the computer labs. Meanwhile, the elementary schools could utilize the empty high school classrooms as needed to maintain social distancing. I'm not sure who could cover the overflow. Perhaps an AB schedule, students could report to high school for their specials like PE, art, music, chorus, where the classroom teacher would stay at the designated school and teach half the class one day and, and the other half the next. I don't have all the answers and I don't see all of the many elements that need to be considered. I am glad that we are taking time to explore our options. Together, we can figure this out. Thanks for hearing me." Ms. Sharon Page. "Good morning. I am sorry I cannot deliver my remarks in person." I got you, Sharon. But you know COVID. Please take a moment to imagine with me. Imagine you are a parent with a couple of school-aged children and it's summer. It's so very hot, as it is right now in St. Mary's County. Over ninety degrees in the shade and we haven't had a good rain. Your whining kids ask to go to the swimming pool. This is a good idea, but the pool is closed due to a lifeguard testing positive for COVID. No worries, you have access to the water, your choice, Potuxa or Potomac. You pack up your kids, food towels, and away you go to the river. You arrive, you unpack, you walk your kids to the beach. What is the first thing you do? You are a smart adult from St. Mary's County, so you check the water for jellyfish. What do you see? The water is full of glowing slimy, mean-looking jellyfish with stinging tentacles that are almost invisible. You look around the beach, there they are, laying there in their gelatinous mounds, beckoning your five-year-old to step right on them. They still sting even on land. Since you are a smart adult, you say, "Sorry, kids, we gotta go home. We will play in the sprinkler and I will see about buying a slip-and-slide. Maybe I can find a pool for the backyard." You pack up your disappointed children and let them eat popsicles, dripping them all over the car on the way home. Why do we do this? Why not put pantyhose on them and let them swim? Why not put meat tenderizer on the stings? You don't risk your children because you are smart. You are a careful adult who wants to keep your children safe from jellyfish and maybe even a shark. I ask you to imagine the COVID-19 virus as the jellyfish. It's not a far leap. The virus is all around us, waiting. We cannot see it, just like jellyfish tentacles. No pantyhose or meat tenderizer is enough. One moment of fun in the water is not worth the agony of a sting or a bite. We are in a battle pitting humanity against a virus. We can win this battle, this war, by being cautious and vigilant. We have a one-hundred percent survival rate. We, we can have a one-hundred percent survival rate. If we are conservative and watchful, if we give attention to the data and science, we will win. Now is absolutely not the time to go into the water. Now is the time to be prepared for new kinds of schooling. It will not be forever, but it must be for now. Now is the time to decide. Keep us safe so in six months that we will still be here together. Thank you." Ms. Emily Parker. "Dear Board of Education members, I am writing in response to Dr. Smith's letter and video to staff which was sent regarding the return to school. As we approach the upcoming school year, I would like to voice the concerns I have for myself and family. I have three children, ages one, five and seven. My five-year-old will be starting kindergarten and my seven-year-old will be starting second grade. Per Dr. Smith's video, teachers will be required to be in the building in August. Due to the nature of my husband's work, he was laid off in March and has just started going back to work. This has obviously caused financial strain already. If I am required to be in the building full-time and my kids have to attend daycare, we will have to incur a two-thousand-dollar-a-month bill for all three for full-time care. This is a financial burden that we had not planned for and will force me to choose between my career and healthcare or if I keep them home. Will there be any flexibility in the hours that we are in the building? If I am unable to work around my husband's work schedule and our weekends to come into the building and record lessons as needed, this material would be a huge, this would be a huge help to avoid daycare expenses. I am also more hap, more than happy to get the needed materials from school, bring them home to record lessons from home. The county will be offering parents the opportunity to choose between in-person learning or virtual learning for their children. As an employee and parent in SMCPS, I would like to also be afforded this same choice. I do not feel comfortable sending my five and seven-year-olds to school where masks will be required and social distancing measurements will need to be enforced. None of this is developmentally or early childhood appropriate." None of this is developmentally or early childhood appropriate. This does not set children up for their best learning. I would like to keep them safe at home and give them the opportunity to learn interactively virtually. If I am in the building full-time, when and how I'm going to be able to help my children with their online learning? If they are in daycare full-time, they will not have any learning opportunity during the day. My mother and father-in-law have been my children's main childcare since they were born. My mother-in-law is immunocompromised and is considered in the high-risk category for COVID. We are unable to rely on them anymore for childcare as we are being responsible and socially distancing from them to protect them and keep them safe. With that said, we are also responsible for their care should they need any help. We will no longer, we will no longer feel comfortable visiting even distance when my children are exposed to others in daycare and I am exposed to other children and coworkers when I go back to the building. Thank you for your patience. Ms. Michelle Smith. Dear Mrs. Bailey and members of Board of Education, I write this letter to you today.
Yeah, just the other Michelle Smith. Not my wife.
Not his wife.
Oh, noted. 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 Yes, Michelle Smith as in the media specialist at McKenna's. Thank you for the clarification. May I start again?
Yes, please.
All right.
Reset the timer.
Okay, we got that cleared up. All right. Dear Mrs. Bailey and members of the Board of Education, I write this letter to you today as both an employee and a parent of a student in St. Mary's County Public Schools. The decision you make to reopen schools is going to be one of the most important decisions that you will make with your tenure on the Board of Education. It is one that I'm sure you do not take lightly. I respectfully request that you vote to start the 2020-21 school year with all students participating in distance learning. We do not know enough about COVID-19 and its effect on children. Children's daily routines have been ended, upended since March thirteenth, 2020. While we think that children are not as affected by COVID-19 as severely as adults, we will not know this until they are exposed to more people. It was just reported in the New York Times that children between the ages of ten through nineteen can spread the virus as easily as adults do. As of July twenty-first, 2020, eighty-six children between the ages of zero and nineteen have been diagnosed with COVID-19 in St. Mary's County, according to the St. Mary's County Health Department. Imagine what that number might grow to if students are to return to the school buildings. Maryland's COVID-19 cases are rising, so much so that on Monday, July twentieth, 2020, five health officers from Anarundel County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, Prince George's County, and Montgomery County have sent a letter to the Maryland Deputy Health Secretary asking the state to reconsider some of the activities that are currently allowed under the current Phase Two executive orders. From the period of July twenty-one through, June twenty-one through July twenty-one, St. Mary's County has been seeing an increase of two-hundred-and-six confirmed COVID cases. While we are all eager to return to our classrooms, it must be done safely. It is not safe for us to do so right now. I understand that distance learning has its challenges. As a media specialist, I spent many hours helping families navigate clever and imagined learning this past spring. I have also helped with the Schoolology course build for Library Media. I see the potential. It has to be a powerful tool as we continue with distance learning. As a parent, I take comfort knowing that my elementary student will get so much more out of Schoolology, including the opportunity to interact with her teacher. Your choice to open the school year virtually will allow all students to focus solely on Schoolology to deliver instruction to our students. Teachers and students will become proficient with this platform much faster. In addition to having students participate in distance learning, I request that you consider allowing employees who are able to perform their duties via telecommuting the choice to do so. Governor Hogan said in his press conference on Thursday, July sixteenth, that employers should continue to encourage telework when possible and that all Marylanders are still safe at home. Ms. Karina Cable. I am writing to express my concerns with schools opening in the fall with face-to-face teaching. One factor I am concerned about is the cleaning of the buildings during the daytime. We will need classrooms and bathrooms cleaned every hour. We currently do not have enough personnel to clean buildings every hour. Another concern is face masks. Children will not keep face masks on. They do not understand and it's hard for them. We can educate how it's important to wear a mask, but it will not stop kids from taking them off. Daycare is another concern. We do not have enough daycare for all teachers' kids, which means we have no one to watch our kids. We should do online learning in the fall. All those who can telecommute should work from home. This is a tough time and we are faced with many challenges. We need to do what's best for all and do virtual learning in the fall. It's not the perfect solution, but it's the safest. Dr. Robin Solomon. My name is Robin Solomon and I am a teacher at Linnertown High School. I am writing to share my thoughts about our reopening plans for the upcoming school year. I strongly support starting with virtual learning and with staff ability to telework. My concerns stem from unanswered questions about the hybrid model and safety as well as safe return to buildings for all staff. While I know S M C P S has been diligently working with all interested parties to design the best plan possible, there is just too much unknown risk with an incoming, with an in-person opening. With cases rising in the state and new data from South Korea showing that children ten through nineteen spread the virus just as much as adults, we must be diligent in stopping the spread and protecting all members of our community. With questions about social distancing and busing, students eating in the classroom, students who may be unable to follow mask and safety guidelines, and a myriad other issues about cleaning, health, and safety, it is more prudent to make sure students have access to technology and the internet now to ensure that all students can access our online learning platform. I am confident that the fall experience will be much more productive for all parties than what was experienced in the spring and we will do our best to meet our students' needs. We also must meet staff needs. Employees who can telecommute and perform their jobs adequately should telecommute. Even if we are in our classrooms, we would have to share bathrooms and other work areas and many teachers do share classrooms. As Governor Hogan has said, reopening does not mean going back to normal. His message is still that anybody who can telework should continue teleworking into the future. Thank you for your time. Ms. Chloe Elizabeth Jordan. My concern is if a parent sends their child to school after taking medicine for a fever before the child leaves home to come to school, that leaves the entire school at risk because all students will be entering the building through the same door and when the medicine wears off, the fever returns and again a whole school could become infected. Also keep in mind that if the same child has siblings in other schools, then I will say that those schools will be, have to be under quarantine as well, not to mention the buses. We cannot police households. Parents have been sending their children to school sick before this and most will likely continue to do so. It will not, it will be too late when we have all, it will be too late when we have to call the parents to pick up the child because the transmission process has already started and hundreds of other students and staff have already been exposed. Ms. Kim Farmer. Nobody has said testing for staff or students. It has been said by the CDC, children's symptoms are different than adults. And how do we handle asymptomatic, which carry the virus but have no symptoms? And what is the plan for special needs children who will not or cannot wear a mask for a full school day? Mr. and Mrs. Tim and Rachel Maraca. My spouse and I are both teachers for the county. In addition, we are parents. As teachers, we too are greatly concerned about the well-being and learning of the students in the county. We are more concerned about the health of these students, their families, and the community at large. And therefore, in this current pandemic in which our district still confirms additional cases of COVID daily, we must advocate for a fully virtual return to school for students and staff members this fall. We know that this places a burden upon families, especially those with essential workers who cannot work from home, but we still feel it is the least dangerous option for the greatest number of community members. We advocate for staff members as well to be given the option to work virtually. In the S M C P S staff video last Monday, Superintendent Scott Smith mentioned that staff should expect to return to their sites in August. For many, this requirement is unreasonable given the circumstances that they may be in due to the pandemic. In our two teacher household, one of us would need to resign or take a leave of absence since we are not comfortable sending our child to daycare. Many other teacher parents that we have spoken with shared this concern. Even if a staff member is comfortable sending a child to daycare, where will these openings be available during a pandemic in a country where this was already, where there was already a daycare shortage? Will daycares be tasked with delivering online instruction to school-aged children? And is daycare, and daycare is not the only issue. What about staff or members of their household who are immunocompromised? Or staff who are caring for elderly parents? Requiring staff to work from their sites puts an additional undue burden on the community and would force many of us to make choices between our health, our families, our jobs, rather than for what is best for all three. Teaching from home is far from ideal, but that should be our choice. S M C P S should acknowledge the variety of situations their staff member families are in and trust them to do what is best for all stakeholders. Ms. Kimberly Schrader. Good morning, Board of Education members. I have several concerns as a teacher of the very youngest of students entering the school building. These fledgling learners use many manipulatives throughout the day during their learning time. S M C P S is limited in the quantity of manipulatives we have available and they must be thoroughly cleaned after each use. There is neither the time nor the resources to ensure that this is performed safely for all. We will be supplied, will we be supplied the proper cleaning supplies for manipulatives? Will staff be provided with proper P P E and required to risk their own well-being to clean these items? Students at such a young age spend a lot of time working together, usually in extreme close proximity. This cannot and will not happen with the new regulations for the reopening of our schools. Coming into our school buildings is already a new and scary endeavor for our youngest children. To compound that with the inability to socialize and play with others, the need to wear an uncomfortable mask like bad guys all day is going to be unduly stressful. We want school to be a welcoming, safe place and despite, while I know our teachers will do everything in their power to make that happen, there is no way to create an environment that will be anything less than extremely stressful and perhaps even traumatic. Typically, in a primary classroom, many items are shared throughout the day. This includes bathrooms in many cases and I can testify to the fact that they are used extremely often by our youngest students. I am concerned about how they are going to be cleaned during the day and by whom. Our beginning students are very hands-on and touch many surfaces throughout the day. S M C P S does not have the capacity to safely maintain these bathrooms and classrooms. For the health and safety of our students and staff, I am asking you to ensure that we all start the year virtually until the virus is under control and without continuing spikes. Employees who can successfully telecommute should do so and those who can choose to come in should also do so with safe and limited parameters defined in advance. We need only look around at other states to see what doesn't work and what price they are paying for prematurely opening. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns as a veteran educator. Ms. Jamie Penny. Hello, as an elementary teacher with three elementary-aged children, I need to be able to stay home with them while students and teachers work virtually. Going into work will force my own children to stay alone because I do not have a budget to pay hundreds weekly for childcare during this unexpected time home. I believe that teachers demonstrate both compassion and professionalism to be able to conduct classes from their home, office, dining room, et cetera, without a need to worry about their dedication to their job and students as was demonstrated from March through June. And truly, our best interest is always with our students in mind. I don't see a way where this wouldn't be successful. Teachers are designed to succeed. While having our own children home with us isn't favorable because we wish for everyone's child to be learning at school, it is the most practical. Please show teachers that you are in touch with our needs and limited salaries and consider allowing teachers to work virtually from home. Thank you. Ms. Sarah Mary. Hi, I am writing as a sales teacher with over two decades of varied special education experience. Reopening school buildings is a complex challenge, particularly with our most vulnerable student populations. We need to ensure comprehensive and smart precautions are in place to ensure the health and safety of both staff members and students. My concerns include, but are not limited to, the question of students who are unable or unwilling to wear a facial mask. Requiring students to wear facial coverings is an important first step, of course, but there must be also a clearly delineated response if they cannot or refuse to do so. There is the question too of disinfecting the spaces shared by staff and students. Commercial disinfectant products as well as personal protective equipment are few and far between due to the immense demand. What will we be, what will be provided to staff members and in what quantity? Will the responsibility of thorough disinfection at the set intervals throughout the day solely fall to teachers and paraprofessionals? Or will there be an increased building service worker presence? As a sales teacher, I am also concerned by situations in which social distancing cannot be accomplished. These include helping students with toileting and the changing of pull-ups or diapers, as well as students who tend towards aggression or frequently attempt to leave their assigned area, necessitating close physical proximity and often hand-holding. As with every educator in the county and indeed the country, I dearly miss my students and sharing an inclusive and productive classroom environment with them. But many questions must be answered and inevitable challenges planned for before a safe and sustainable reopening is feasible. Thank you. Ms. Renee Maxi. I believe that teachers and students should embrace distance learning. We wish it was different. However, it is just not safe to return to school. Even with the smaller number of students rotating, teachers and students are potentially exposed to COVID. In reality, if a student or a teacher get COVID and they are self-quarantined for fourteen days, this is going to be very disruptive. Then, when this situation repeats itself with additional cases, it's hard to see what learning is really taking place. I feel strongly that no one should return to in-class learning until it is significantly safer. Ms. Julian Honus. I'm hesitant to go back to school this fall. I want to see my new students and the smiling faces of my.
I want to see my new students and the smiling faces of my old students. I want to greet them every day and say hello. I want to provide for them the best education I can, and I don't think this needs to be done in person. I have some serious concerns about returning to the classroom with students, and if that is really the best way to educate students. I've heard all kinds of rumors about how school will start this fall. I do not feel safe teaching different groups of students each day as I've heard a lot of districts across the county have entertained. I'm still at just as severe a risk while we are all trying to mitigate the risk to the students. You need to reduce and eliminate my risk as well. How will you lower the contact risk that I am exposed to? I am not going to sit down and take one for the team just to be back at work with increased risk when I could be doing the same thing at home safely from my house without exposure to others. I've seen the vacation trip photos and videos that friends and parents are sharing and know these families are going out of town and state. I also know that not many people are following the 14-day quarantine after traveling out of state. I cannot trust, and neither should you, the ability of someone to follow the rules. If this was the case, we would need no discipline code. I cannot trust that both my students, their peers they interact with, and my fellow teachers will conduct themselves in a manner that is safest for the betterment of the whole school community. "You're not that sick to go to school," quote. "I want to tough it out because I don't want to miss a day," quote. "I've missed too many days, so I'm going in." I've heard all of these from both sides of the conversations with students. Parents are desperate to get back to work, and I understand. It just cannot be taken at the expense of other people's children or their teachers. Also, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Based on the video recently released by our superintendent, Dr. Smith, to all staff, it sounds like I could be safely in the building. Why? I'm at a far less risk working from my home. I don't want to, but I don't want to increase my risk level for myself and my family either. Let's find a way to meet our students virtually, support them at home safely from my home. This is all for and about a healthy family unit without any underlying conditions. What about a family, household member who is at risk and shouldn't even be going to the grocery store? Now, we are asking those teachers to come into work and bring the risk into the household when all this could have been online. Ms. Kimberly Evans Rodriguez. As St. Mary's County Public Schools decide the delivery method of the 2021 school year, I ask that staff be considered at the same standard as students. Governor Hogan has requested that employers allow employees to telework if possible. The majority of SMCPS staff have available technology and internet service in their homes, and that would adequately allow them to telework. If the decision is made for students to participate in online distance learning, please do not force staff who are able to telework to report to school buildings every day. These staff members have families at home. They are not limited to children. They also have aging parents and grandparents who they will be forced to no longer see if they are required to come into school buildings. Coming into buildings and being exposed to other staff on a daily basis, no matter self-distancing, the exposure will occur and to be certain not to transmit COVID-19 to an aging family member. A two-week quarantine would be necessary and impossible if staff are required to work regularly from school buildings during this time. I am not requesting that staff not enter the buildings at all, but rather, if staff need to enter the school building due to no internet at home, they should be allowed. Or if staff must enter the school building to use technology that the only school building has, then they should do so when necessary. Most staff do not need to enter the school building on a daily basis, and no matter what cleaning and distancing measures are put in place, there will be risks of exposure with this. So I ask that you please do not require all staff to report to school buildings every day. As we learned and proved during the spring, staff meetings, professional development trainings, and PLCs can be successfully held virtually on a flexible basis and to meet the needs of certain individuals who do not have the access from home. I can understand staff needing to enter the school buildings, but to require this daily of all staff is unnecessary, unsafe, and not supported by the Governor Maryland, as he is encouraging employers to allow telework if possible. Thank you for your consideration. Ms. Carla Smith. My name is Carla Smith, and I have been teaching in St. Mary's County for 24 years. The last 20 in first grade at Mechanicsville Elementary School. Fifteen years ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. I underwent radiation therapy, which killed a portion of my left lung. I continue to teach throughout my chemotherapy and radiation treatments because...excuse me. I didn't get a pre-read this. I continue to teach throughout my chemotherapy and radiation treatments because I love my students and did not want them to miss out on instruction. Fast forward 15 years, I am now 51 years old and have a partially damaged lung, as well as other health issues that put me at high risk for complications if I were to contract COVID-19. I cannot retire, so I am faced with risking my life to attend class each day. I still love my students, but I love my life more. I know my students. They will not stay six feet apart. They will not keep their mask on fully the entire day, and they will not stay six feet away from me. Everyone keeps talking about the harm done by students working virtually with emotional harm. What emotional harm will come when their teacher is dressed in a lab coat, mask, protective face shield, and gloves, which I fully intend to do, and refuses to assist them with things such as opening lunch items or assisting with clothing issues such as zippering of coats or undoing buttons since these actions require close proximity? If students attend class virtually, I could certainly embrace the use of interactive technology that would allow the teacher to have a hands-on approach while keeping their distance. If virtual was the way school started, I also do not see the problem with teachers teleworking again. I spent many days at my dining room table from 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., including eating my lunch at the computer, to make the end of the 2019-20 school year as beneficial as possible. I found many elective activities and supplemental lessons throughout the school year as beneficial as possible. I found many elective activities and supplemental lessons that the parents were grateful for, including a parent whose student was a struggling reader. I put in many overtime hours to help this family, including providing resources for them in addition to the Imagine Learning Platform. I know I am not alone in these actions. The decision of a few to do the minimum should not be the reason for the rest of us to have to put our lives on the line. I am willing again to put in long hours and weekends to make virtual learning as successful as possible while protecting myself. Finally, in a perfect world, everyone wearing masks, sanitizing, and distancing would keep me and everyone safe. However, I have seen parents and many students not wearing masks. How do I convince their children when they aren't even trying? Ms. Tammy Adams. As we prepare for the new school year, I would like to know more about the virtual learning which will be set up for our school system students in the sales program. What is SMCPS going to do for those students who are physically or intellectually are not able to learn through the use of a computer? I feel comfortable with the response thus far for IEP carriers who are diploma-bound, but at this time, I don't feel I've gotten answers for the sales students who have so many needs beyond academics for them to be successful. How will their teachers and specialists be able to meet these students' IEP goals? In the spring, my sales student was unsuccessful with the program provided due to the fact that he could not, even with a one-on-one assistance, complete the task using the computer. With specialized equipment such as an iPad, will specialized equipment such as an iPad be provided to families or at least give students a chance to make an attempt? I am concerned that a whole population of our student body is losing out on making progress towards their goal. Thank you. Ms. Sonia Stonewell. The fact that someone must read this statement because it's not safe for me to be in person to do so should speak volumes. It is not safe to gather at a Board of Education meeting, then why is it deemed safe to convene in the same manner in a classroom? What will change in the coming weeks or months? As an educator, why is my life considered to be expendable? What about that of my family? It seems reasonable to request that the day is safe for the public to attend more meetings is the day it should be deemed safe for staff and students to return to schools. Each member of the SMCPS family should receive the same care and considerable measures you have established for yourselves during this potential deadly time. While I understand that distance learning is not an equivalent substitute for in-class learning, it does allow students the opportunity to learn and provides everyone a greater opportunity to be protected from the coronavirus until a more optimal time arrives. Please consider continuing distance learning for the first and second quarter of the upcoming 2020-21 school year, then reconvene to decide whether it is safe to return in January for the third quarter. We're in the home stretch. Everybody still with me? All right, thumbs up. Thank you, Dr. Smith. All right. Here we go. I do need a little. Ms. Sarah Pinrod. My name is Sarah Pinrod. I am a teacher at Chopticon High School and ESMIC Vice President. All summer long, I have worked with ESMIC and SMCPS to help prepare for the safest possible return to school in the fall for students and staff. While we have made tremendous progress with this unprecedented situation, we still have a long way to go. It's especially challenging because as educators, we all want to return to our classroom and our students, but we must do so safely. The advice we were given is to wash your hands and wear a mask. As educators everywhere, chuckle. Let's take a moment to imagine your last trip to the grocery store. How many adults did you see not properly wearing a mask? Perhaps you might admit to even sneaking your own mask down over your nose to get a quick breath of fresh air. If adults struggle with wearing a mask properly during a 20-minute trip to the store, we can't logically expect children to wear one for eight hours per day. And if you think washing hands every couple of hours is enough to keep a virus from spreading, I challenge you to try this experiment. Hand a child some glitter and see how long it takes for you to sparkle, too. Combine all of this with the fact that Maryland's COVID numbers are slowly starting to increase again. Availability of PPE and cleaning supply for teachers is dependent on the depleting budget, and there is no vaccine in sight. It seems a safe return to school could only mean 100% virtual fall semester. After all, it is the school board making the decision. Cannot sit closer than six feet apart without mask, and public comment has to be done virtually for fear of spreading infection. How can we expect staff and students to put themselves in that position? However, with the virtual start to the school year for students, the same safety concerns remain for staff members working in buildings. While it might be safe for teachers to social distance in their classrooms alone, that doesn't address the use of restrooms, water fountains, door handles, and shared equipment. That doesn't address passing in hallways, proper airflow in schools with old and malfunctioning HVAC systems, or support professionals such as food and building service workers who by nature of their job must come into contact with more people. We understand that some essential jobs can only be completed on-site, but by following Governor Hogan's recommendations, we can reduce the amount of exposure to these employees by allowing those staff members who can do their job in its entirety outside of the building to telework from home. Thank you. And our last public comment. Dear Board of Education members and Superintendent Smith, as educators, as educators love our profession and would like to be in school with our students, however, it is out of our deep commitment to concern and concern for our students that families and our community at large that we have elected as the Board of Directors of this association, representing over 2,100 bargaining unit members, submit this public comment. Clearly, we are all in agreement that it is unsafe to meet in person. Our ESMIC Board of Directors met virtually in collaboration to develop this statement. Our ESMIC reopening task force meets virtually each week to assess concerns and developments, and you, the Board of Ed of St. Mary's County, continue to meet virtually. The SMCPS Zoom meetings in which we participate show staff sitting in large spaces alone without masks. Unfortunately, this is not the reality that students and some employees would face if mandated to return unnecessarily. If we re-enter school buildings at this point with the current numbers of infections and the rate of COVID-19 spread, the following outcome is what we can reasonably predict. Excuse me. SMCPS reports an enrollment of 18,084 students on their website. Let's assume the best-case scenario. A very low rate of infection, 5% reported today from Maryland, and no further spikes parallel to 90% of the rest of the nation. This means that 904 students become ill from COVID. Continuing with the very conservative numbers and assuming a sustained low mortality rate of 2.5% of positive infections, we will have 23 student deaths. With the same math, it can be estimated that 105 educators become infected, and 13 of them will die. Excuse me. This is before calculating for higher-risk factors such as pre-existing conditions and age. If you consider the number of SMCPS employees aged 50 and older, and you review the top 10 prescriptions utilized in our healthcare plan, the number of illnesses and deaths that we can anticipate grow exponentially. Furthermore, we cannot ignore the other suspected chronic outcomes from this disease, from blood clot-related strokes to embolisms to the terrifying multi-inflammatory syndrome in children. Of course, we must also grapple with the long-lasting mental health impacts. At what price and liability is it worthwhile to needlessly return students and educators to school? Our concern is for the health of our entire community, which includes educators and their families, as well as students and their families, with special consideration for those who are medically vulnerable or otherwise at increased risk. It is our position that right now, there is no simple way to return to school buildings safely or fairly. Before COVID-19 struck, districts struggled with the hardship of massive educator shortage. Now, you must take into consideration that according to a nationwide survey, 20% of staff that will not return to school in person will only participate virtually. We know that many educators will retire or resign. A staffing crisis is imminent if we attempt to open irresponsibly. I'm paraphrasing because I'm over my time. Until our governor removes his recommendation that all those telecommute who can and until medical experts recognized by ESMIC confirm that it is safe to do so, we cannot return to our school buildings unless on a limited involuntary basis for staff. we cannot return to our school buildings unless on a limited involuntary basis for staff. We ask you, the duly-elected Board of St. Mary's County and Dr. Smith, to be courageous. Don't choose the path of ease for childcare or the path of popularity for those who will not be facing these risks without any answers. Choose wisely, choose boldly, choose ethically. We are grateful for your leadership at this very difficult time for our nation and our community. Respectfully, the ESMIC Board of Directors, Jill Morris, Sarah Pinrod, Blanca Remat, Elaine Deans, Emily Gao, Kristy Mattingly, Patty Parsons, Sharon Page, Meadow Swaby, and Angie Goska. Thank you so much for your time, for your respect, but thank you mostly for listening to educators' voices as we know you are faced with the most difficult situation in educational history. So I really appreciate your flexibility this morning, and I am exiting quickly. I know I need to be done. Thank you.
You're fine, Jill.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary? Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Myself is aye. Okay, and with that, we will move to the very first action item, which is the purchase of disinfectant sprayers with Mr. Varner.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me singing?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the time this morning. If you can move to the next slide, please.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you. A constant focus of the operations department, as you know, is to constantly be looking for more efficient ways to benefit our staff and to improve the servicing that we provide to schools and offices. The current circumstances that we find ourselves in with recovery present some very unique challenges, and we are actively seeking solutions to combat those challenges. One of those solutions I want to talk about today involves the purchase of some equipment that will help our staff more efficiently disinfect areas of building users in our schools and offices. Next slide. I'm sure you read it. I think we skipped one. I'm sorry. Can you go back one? Yes, thank you. I'm sure you read a common theme in recommendations for reopening that we've seen from organizations like the CDC, county and state health departments and others, is a focus on cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched surfaces and facilities in order to provide a higher level of safety for faculty and students during this crisis and into the future. Next slide. Such a focus on disinfecting frequently touched surfaces and the subsequent reprioritization of building service tasks throughout the workday basically means we're going to need to reimagine our staffing schedules at schools as a way to get staff, more staff in schools during the school day to help disinfect these areas, to keep building users safe while they're in the buildings. That will take some staff away from the evening shift where we would normally prepare buildings for the next day's activities. A complete revamped cleaning plan for each site, including the prioritization of cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched areas, and also some things we need to deprioritize. And obviously, we'd have to find solutions when we have staff who are absent or we have vacant positions with shorthand accrued. Those situations were already problematic for us in preparing our buildings for staff and students. It would only be exacerbated during these circumstances we find ourselves in. If you could flip the slide, please. We've researched some different solutions to try to help our staff, one of which involves the technologically advanced equipment that I'd like to present to you here. This electrostatic disinfectant sprayer, the Epix 360, has been referred to us. We've researched a bunch of different products. We like this particular product. It's handheld and cordless, easy to transfer, easy to take out to the playground and spray down equipment. It's lightweight. It's not cumbersome. It doesn't have to be worn on an employee's back or pulled behind them in a cart. We can already utilize a diluted disinfection that we already contract for in our schools. It's already in dispersal systems in all of our schools and offices. We can use that product in this device diluted with water. And the whole concept of frequently touched surfaces doesn't always mean horizontal surfaces like desks and tabletops. It can mean vertical underneath. This particular device ionizes water molecules which wraps the disinfectant water. The disinfectant attached to the water molecules around surfaces, which is an extreme advantage for us. We can use these pieces of equipment on a daily basis. It will also help us respond if we need to respond to a positive COVID test situation inside one of our schools to get the facilities ready to receive users again. Our proposed purchase through Dacon, a company we already contract, you recall I presented BMI to you several months ago. We already, the contract through Dacon is quoted at $1,495 per unit. As you can imagine, there currently is a high demand for anything related to cleaning and disinfectant right now. Dacon's price is lower than contracted prices that we've seen available on other formal bids. So the total cost for 50 of these units is $74,750. We plan to use operating and restricted funds to make such a purchase. If you could flip this slide, please. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Mary? Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Just some comments. Thank you very much. The machine is available, which is good because you say, you know, it's hard to get them, and you were able to get them and able to get them at a lower price, and that you're going to work with the staff that you have by moving people from the evening shift and more to the day shift so that those frequently touched surfaces can be cleaned to keep everybody safe. So thank you very much. And this machine has been approved by, I think, the CDC, if I understand it correctly.
You are correct, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
The only question I have is the number. You've got to purchase 50 units. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Where did you come up with that number? I was just curious whether you need 50 or 100 or...
Well, we definitely plan on putting one in each school. Our larger schools, middle schools, high schools, forest center, we'll put multiple devices in. We want to have one available for our office buildings and several backups in case one, we have a battery failure or something along those lines.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I wanted to know, how much disinfectant does each, you know, does this device hold? Does it hold a gallon? Does it hold...
Find that information here. It holds enough, it holds a mixture of water and a little bit of disinfectant. It can cover 4,000 square feet without refilling.
Okay. And then the batteries, I'm looking at it. It looks like it would be just like the, you know, like drills and things like that you would normally have at your home. How long does the battery last?
Battery lasts for two, to spur 20 tanks, 20 full tank of the product.
And then are there rechargeers that come with the product?
Yeah, each unit comes with two batteries and one charger. With your approval for this purchase, also be purchasing some backup batteries from operating funds to support that, so. When we change out batteries, put them on the charger in order to get all of our work done each day.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just am pleased that you've been able to locate a device of this type. I think it will go a long way toward the cleanliness and the sanitization of surfaces within the schools and all of our buildings. So thank you for researching this and bringing this forward.
You're very welcome.
And I don't have any comments on this presentation, but the one bullet on the procurement side about the high demand has made the comparative pricing difficult. We're locked in for all of our other cleaning supplies contracts for two more years. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, because I was just sitting here thinking that if prices are going up, I thought we had just approved it, so that at least will keep us on a steady cost for those items over the next two years, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's see. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the purchase of 50 EPIX 360 electrostatic disinfectant sprayers from Dacon Products Company at a total cost of $74,750.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mary?
Second.
Oh, I have your second now. I'm calling for the vote.
Oh, aye.
Okay. Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, motion is passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Varner.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now we have our consortium of presenters on the recovery planning.
Yes, we do. So I'm going to kind of call on, right now, everybody has their, so everybody who is also on the line, right now, your video is suppressed, and we're using only a speaker view. When we get to the slide that is designated as your presentational portion of this, I will call on you, undo your video, and start talking. You'll appear in the corner of the presentation. So I'm going to start us all off with, our overall approach has been the three Rs, recovery, redesign, and return. We have talked about at several occasions how we ended the year. In the presentation that we had this morning from multiple teachers, they referenced the work that was done in the spring to get us through to the end of the school year. We have been engaged in redesign in earnest since we went to online instruction. That work continues. You'll be hearing a great deal about it. And then the last is the return. How do we come back to school safely? And obviously, we've heard from multiple employees about the concerns that they have. The guiding principles for all of our work, there are six of them. At the very top is health and safety. Health and safety, health and safety, that has to be the driving decision-maker. And that health and safety has to be informed by professionals, by health professionals, by people who know the topics well. And so I'm very pleased today that we're going to have Dr. Brewster, I'm hopeful that she's still with us, that she has joined us to talk specifically about one slide, talking about the health department and what we do when we have a positive case, and she's available for questions that you may have. Equity and access, I talked a little bit about that with the redesigning of the way we organize things at Central Office because that's incredibly important. What you do for one, you need to be able to do for all, and for all have to have the ability to actively engage, have access, and be successful with whatever we do. Community engagement, that's really what we're doing right now in this distanced world. It is a real challenge to make sure that everybody is getting a consistent information and more importantly, has the opportunity to give their input. And that's why we had the opportunity to hear from over 20 teachers this morning. Engaging in high-quality instruction, there was some reference to the Schoology platform that we're building. We're going to hear a preview of the work today, but really, the next town hall that we do on the 29th is all going to be about what the virtual learning environment will look like for our students and what the expectations are for teachers to deliver that instruction, that daily face-to-face virtual instruction that we are building for our children. That tethers right into technology and resource support. You're going to need, our teachers are going to have to have high-speed internet to be able to deliver HD video streaming services to kids. And right now, the only place that we can guarantee that is within our schools. All of our schools have fiber run to them. All of them have incredibly robust infrastructure because they're designed to have thousands of people accessing the internet at any one time. As we have active discussions, that's going to be something that we come back to, as well as how do we deploy a one-to-one resource to every single one of our students, recognizing that in hand right now, we have less than 9,000 deployable machines. We are working on that. We have ordered more. We have not taken receipt of them. And the final part is some of our homes aren't connected to the internet. And how do we, what do we, what do we do about that? What do parents do about that? What does the larger community responsibility and role that they have? And then the last is obviously meeting the very diverse needs of students, from the accelerated learner to the learner who has emotional, social needs, physical needs that we need to meet every single day. So those are the six guiding principles. You heard that this morning. You've heard every one of those six things referenced in all the presentations and the letters and correspondences from our teachers. I cannot emphasize this enough. Scott Smith, the Board of Education, we did not close schools in St. Mary's County. The state superintendent closed schools. The state superintendent closed schools because the governor closed businesses, and they went through a whole phasing. There is the Maryland Strong Roadmap to Recovery Plan that if you haven't read it, you need to read it. If you come and have a conversation and you haven't read it, you're going to be under-informed. And one of the most dangerous things you can be right now is under-informed. Based on the Maryland Strong Plan, the Maryland State Department of Education put together the Maryland Together Program, the plan. And that plan is driving all of our recovery work. We'll get into it a little bit more specifically. But at the very beginning of this plan, updated on June 23rd, so we're not, so we're less than a month ago. A month ago, we were provided the Maryland Together Plan with this preamble, and at the very beginning of saying what's going to happen for the reopening process, the reopening of schools is the decision of the state superintendent. So as we were listening to letters submitted by our teachers, I was receiving several text messages. It appears that the governor and the state superintendent are going to hold a press conference this evening or late afternoon. We will all be tuning in. We will all be watching. I have no idea what will be said. The Board of Education has no idea what will be said. We will certainly listen, and we will appropriately respond and build that into our plan. Because we don't know what will be said, we are not going to make any decisions today. We are not going to finalize any plan today. We are not going to publish a finalized plan with a projection for what school will look like for the remainder of the 2020 school year, because we don't know. As soon as we do, we will then move forward. So I want that to be emphasized with everybody. The decision matrix for how they will, how the state superintendent will decide to reopen schools was published on the June 23rd, and then it was updated in July, the second week of July, and it added that in stage three, schools will reopen normal operations consistent with additional safety measures. Those additional safety measures are not delineated in any formal fashion anywhere in the document. There's a lot of suggestions. There's a lot of recommendations. There's a lot of conjecture and speculation, but I assume that this would be then formalized. And perhaps that's what Dr. Salmon and Governor Hogan are going to be outlining this afternoon, so we'll be able to fill in the gaps on what safety measures will have to be in place before we can resume normal operations of school. I really can't emphasize enough that we are doing an incredible amount of work, but the big decisions are not going to be made in this county. The plan has 13 requirements for reopening of schools. The first one is the big one. We have to have a recovery plan completed and posted to our website by October, sorry, August 14th. So the first part is we have to have it posted by the 14th. I understand that many other systems have moved forward, and they have put together their plan, and they've discussed it, and they've published it. We're still talking to one another. We're still working out all of those component pieces. We're still working out all of those component pieces. We still are talking to teachers and to parents and to health officials and to Central Office staff. We aren't finished with our plan yet, and we don't have to be finished with our plan until August fourteenth. To put together a plan and publish it and to say, this is our plan, before we know what the governor's gonna say and what the superintendent's gonna, the state superintendent's gonna say, I feel is premature. Um, all the other things that are on here, it has to be equitable, it has to identify gaps, it has to follow the state standards. Um, it has to follow and comply with all of the laws and rules that govern school IDEA and five oh four and the, um, ADA. Uh, we have to follow all of the rules, we have to follow all the guidance from the Maryland Department of Health, from our local health officer. Um, and we have to have all of our protocols for all of the daily cleaning, um, and the transportation. Right now, the recommendation that is in the recovery plan says that a school bus that usually runs with fifty to sixty kids should run with ten to twelve. I believe my, some of my other colleagues have talked about the fact that that would then require five to six bus runs to transport the same number of people to a school. Okay. Uh, the last is that we have to, we have to, uh, track attendance. We have to communicate all of this, um, there's a whole checklist that we have to cover. And then the last is, um, MPSSA, the Maryland Public School, Secondary School Athletic Association, is gonna tell us about athletics. It's currently July twenty-second. And about three-quarters of the s, kids who attend school in Maryland, they've made a decision that they're not gonna come back into school in the fall. So they have canceled the athletic programs in their counties. We're still waiting to see what the state has to say at the state level, um, because ultimately, they're the ones that are gonna determine what the seasons would look like and how they will be conducted. Um, you're all familiar with the timeline, uh, in June, we've been, we've been working on it, when we received the actual plan, we've been building towards it. For July, we've been holding town hall meetings and an incredible amount of virtual sessions, and we've been built, bringing together stakeholder groups. This is the board presentation today, and when we get into August, we'll have another, we'll have another, we'll have another, um, town hall meeting on the twenty-ninth. When we get into August, we're gonna talk about how we explicitly communicate to every single parent of any child in Saint Mary's County Public Schools, what the exact plan and process is gonna be for the fall, as well as communicate with every single staff member, every single employee of Saint Mary's County Public Schools, exactly what their role and return to work looks like. This, I think, I hope this was updated last night, um, I think we were, we were kinda going through. As every single school system presents to their board and they talk through this process, they move from unannounced to, and it seems like they kinda shoot through blended learning, and they all end up in fully online, alright? What we're gonna present is the work that has been done for the last month and a half, and a great deal of this work was, has been tailored toward a hybrid model of kids coming back to school. Let's be upfront and recognize that's not going to happen until we can with certainty say the safety measures that we are able to employ are safety measures that are gonna render the students and staff as safe as they possibly can be. So, um, and if you see, the, the, the counties that have gone, said that they're going fully online, and they say fully online all the way through the first, uh, uh, the first semester, uh, they're the biggies. Prince George's County, Howard County, Montgomery County, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Anna Rundle, Washington, and Hartford County. That represents about three-quarters of all the students in the state of Maryland. Um, we've done communication, we're gonna continue to do communication. We realize that it is a flawed communication tool in that I am speaking to you and you are perhaps watching a screen, and we have to do all of our correspondence virtually, because we can't all get together in one group. And every single teacher that referenced that, that has to be, that has to be in the calculus of what we're doing. If we can't come together in a, in a room to talk about how we're gonna return to school, we can't really return to school. The recovery planning team had over ninety members, and at this point, we're gonna do our first roll call to see who's been paying attention at home. And, uh, Dr. Marr, I believe the next slide is yours? Yes, it is, Dr. Marr.
Can I just pause?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith, and I, um,
Oh, hey, hey, Dr. Marr, wait for one second, uh, Ms. Bailey has a comment.
Right, so just, so for the board members, as we go through each of these slides, we teach of the members, if, it's gonna be interactive. So if you have questions, we'll take a break that, or, you know, ask questions while we're on the slide, so at the end, we're not jumping all over the place. And that way, we can discuss an entire issue and have all your questions answered. And then, I know then when we get to Dr. Brewster's portion, then that, everything will be in nice neat little boxes for everyone to discuss.
So, as Dr. Marr presents the topic on the page, before we go to the next one, we'll ask if there's any questions.
Correct.
Okay, great.
That would be great.
Okay, doc.
To save everyone some time.
We get, so, every, every meeting, we get a little bit better, we learn a little bit more. You'll see, if you watch from the very first board meeting, virtually done to now, w- we are, we are learning, we do get better. I, that's the only thing I guarantee is, I get a little bit better each day, because everyone who knows me knows that I need to, so, Dr. Marr.
Yes, thank you, um, I just wanna say thank you to the entire group who has contributed, uh, throughout this summer as part of these planning teams. We have over ninety members, um, as the slide indicates, it includes parents from across the system, it includes students, um, uh, Megina mentioned during her remarks that we have met, uh, several times throughout the summer with the, um, SLAC, the Student Leadership Advisory Council, uh, Steering Committee members to get their input. We have teachers, uh, we have education associate, association members, in fact, many of the members who, who, uh, sent in remarks, uh, read earlier are represented on these, uh, planning committees, we have administrators, central office staff, and the, the Health Department on several of our subcommittees as well, so that we can make sure that we're getting, uh, as many voices in this planning process as possible. The previous slide showed how many people contributed, uh, their voice through surveys or through comments or questions that were submitted as part of the town hall meetings. All of that input is brought back to the planning teams, so they can consider it, also looking at the state guidance and, uh, current health conditions and what that may lead us to as well. And so I just wanna say a special thank you to everybody who's been participating, because it's, there have been several meetings every week, uh, since, since the latter part of June. We have a, a full subcommittee meeting that meets on Thursdays, as well as two or three meetings that occur throughout the week with each of the, uh, subcommittees and their, their, their individual teams. Um, and so I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Montgomery, uh, for, for co-leading this, as well as each of the directors who are part of this and, and all the members of the team. So, uh, with that, I will pause and, and, uh, again, share my thanks.
Okay, I don't think we have any questions on that side, we're good.
The work of the, the subcommittees has focused on these four areas, um, and these areas align with the guidance that was provided by the State Department, um, that, that Dr. Smith shared in the previous, uh, set of slides. Uh, there are a group of, of recommendations that are provided around teaching and learning, and we're gonna talk about those, um, in just a bit. There are recommendations around how we provide continued services for students. Services around supporting services, that includes transportation and food services, as well as, uh, providing cleanliness, uh, for all of our facilities. And then we have organization and system support, which is really looking at things from the master schedule and how we, uh, consider bringing students in when that hybrid learning takes place. Um, and then cross-cutting themes of equity, staff development, stakeholder input, I just shared the information about our stakeholders. Uh, we also have each one of these subgroups looking at what professional development needs to be provided for staff, so that they're ready for, uh, whatever learning looks like this fall. And then of course, uh, equity across, uh, our, our schools and our services. And, and part of that is equity of access, to make sure that every student has access to the learning that will take place.
So, um, thank you very much, Dr. Marr, and I think Dr. Marr might be popping back in a little later. In school and at the workplace, no matter what happens, even if we go fully virtual, um, the same, the, the same six elements are gonna be present. Hand washing, hand sanitizer, face coverings, physical distance, cleaning, and then training for all staff. I will put forth that, um, probably our education facilities, our, our schools themselves are going to be more, um, sanitized and monitored and cleaned and regulated than anything you'd see at, say, Target, or Walmart, or a restaurant, or a bar, or Ocean City, or anywhere that you find yourselves. So, um, we are really doing everything in our power to make them as safe as they can possibly be. And for anybody using a restroom anywhere, the safest thing you can do is wash your hands before you leave and don't touch your face while you're in there. And that stands, uh, that's good advice today, yesterday, and tomorrow. So, all of the, every place that you go, these are the six things that are going to be pretty much, uh, forefront in whatever we discuss. So at this point, um, before we get into a plan and a hybrid and really talking about things, um, I would love to have Dr. Brewster, if she's still on the line. Oh no, is Dr. Brewster? Let me, let me, let me, um, let's see if Dr. Brewster is still, uh, she says she's on the line.
I'm here on the line.
Oh, hey, do me fair, if you could un, uh, is there any, well, either way.
There she is.
Oh, there you are, great. Um, if you could, I would just like to talk a little bit about, um, you know, the work that we have done collaboratively, uh, and, and the guidance ultimately that, that is provided us, uh, as far as what would happen when we get into the schools themselves, or we have staff returning to buildings. We have had, we've, we've had, uh, I just wanted you to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about the process that the Health Department goes through when we have a positive symptom or a positive, uh, test case for, for COVID.
Right, absolutely, happy to do so, and thank you, uh, very much for inviting me to, to speak on this. And, uh, before I start, I, I just wanna commend, uh, the whole school system. Uh, you've been doing tremendous, uh, work over the past several weeks, uh, and, and months really, uh, to prepare for, uh, what might be ahead. So, I really appreciate all your attention to detail and your, uh, concern and, and desire to particize, uh, whatever can be particized now, in preparation for the fall. Um, so what happens when, uh, individuals have symptoms that are consistent with COVID nineteen? Uh, they need to be excluded from contact with other people. Uh, so whether that's a student or a staff member, if they're developing symptoms of COVID nineteen during these times, uh, it, it is best for them to, uh, uh, be home and isolate. Uh, and, uh, depending on, uh, what their evaluation suggests, uh, they would then either get tested, uh, for COVID nineteen, uh, or continue, uh, staying home and monitoring for their symptoms and to see how their symptoms resolve. Uh, if an individual, either student or staff member is identified as having, uh, ha, actually having a positive test, uh, regardless of whether they have symptoms, um, they also need to isolate at home, uh, and, uh, be, uh, away from others. And their, those contacts, uh, would need to quarantine as well, uh, and monitor for development of symptoms, uh, in their own cells. So within a school setting, uh, this, this has broad implications. So if, uh, there are several children, for example, in a classroom, um, all of those children, uh, may be subject, uh, to quarantine if a fellow student or a staff member in that classroom setting, uh, is, uh, diagnosed with COVID nineteen or develops, um, a constellation of symptoms, uh, of, of COVID nineteen.
Right, so the, so the one thing that we've been really working through is, and, and by the time we publish our final plan, uh, will be the exact protocol that the school system will follow when we are informed of any student or staff testing positive for COVID. The way in which we would then be communicating with all other students who may be in that cohort group, or that class, or that bus, as well as all of the, if it's a staff member, all of the students that they came in contact with, or the staff member, all the people that they perhaps came in, came in contact with. What those communications would look like and what that quarantine is. And the current, uh, and this is one of the greatest challenges that we had when we were discussing the return to school and bringing back students. Um, in the event that you have, let's say, a high school student who tests positive for COVID, and he or she attended six different classes throughout the day, even if the classes were only fifteen children per class, that's still a little less than a hundred, plus every teacher of that class would have to then go into a fourteen-day quarantine from the last time they had interaction with, with a student. We also then have challenges with FERPA, as far as we would, and HIPAA, we would not be able to identify the student. We would just have to say that somebody in the class of, um, in your, in your child's class tested positive.
And would that quarantine extend also to the, um, other family members of the students who've been
Exposed.
Exposed?
That's probably Dr. Brewster.
That's, that's why we have Dr. Brewster on the, on the call.
Typically, the quarantine extends to individuals who've had direct close contact with the person who's tested positive, or the person who has, uh, symptoms of COVID like illness and is in the process of getting tested. So, we wouldn't necessarily quarantine or recommend quarantine of contacts of contacts. It's more the context of the person who either is symptomatic or it has a positive test.
Thank you.
And does exposure translate into an automatic test for COVID, or you have to have exposure and be exhibiting symptoms? Cause I know there's a lot of talk about people who are positive but yet don't exhibit symptoms.
Yeah, great question, thank you for raising that. Uh, so exposure is itself an indication for testing, regardless of whether or not you develop symptoms. Uh, we have been seeing with this illness, as you referenced, a significant amount of, uh, what we call asymptomatic spread of disease. So individuals who don't have symptoms, who are actually spreading the infection to other people, uh, or, uh, what's called pre-symptomatic spread of disease. So you don't yet have symptoms, you will develop symptoms, but you do have infection and you are contagious. Uh, and sometimes the test result will actually come back positive in that pre-symptomatic phase as well.
Okay, and then, so, um, using Scott's example of one child who may, or, you know, may have COVID, and then the potential for exposure among a hundred people within that one building, not even putting into the fact that if they are a tech center student and have traveled between two different buildings during the course of a single school day, then does the county have the capacity, do we have enough test kits to handle something like that if we have multiple exposures, you know, over the course of a two or three-week period?
Excellent, uh, question as well. Right now, we are, um, gathering additional tests, and we're trying to offer testing for our community, and we're able to conduct the testing as needed for the, uh, demand that we have right now. Obviously, uh, if, uh, if schools are to reopen in person, uh, and, uh, that's happening across the state, the demand on those tests, uh, are, are going to exponentially increase. Uh, and so we may be facing a limited access situation to test kits. Um, I would like to point out, it's not just the access to the test kits, even if we have access to the tests and the county health department, we're purchasing quite a bit of tests and we're getting some tests for free from the state as well. But even if we have access to test kits, the delays that we're seeing, seeing even now, uh, is occurring at the laboratories, where the laboratories that are processing the tests may not have enough, um, reagents or the chemicals, uh, that they need to process those, uh, test samples. So within a school setting, uh, just to, you know, kinda work that scenario further, uh, within a school setting, that's particularly complicated. If you're, if you're on quarantine, uh, and, uh, you're, you're ill and you're waiting for your test result, and your test result is taking eight, nine, ten days, um, you're essentially serving, uh, the majority of that fourteen-day quarantine anyways. Uh, and, uh, of course, that extends the amount of time that you're, uh, not, uh, not in the school setting.
Alright, thank you. So for all the parents listening at home, this would be the protocol, not, that is, that is currently in place in Saint Mary's County from the Health Department, if you are exposed to the virus.
Right.
So it's not, once again, as Scott mentioned at the beginning, it's not our call, it's the Health Department call based on Dr. Brewster's expertise and what she has seen, you know, coming through on our county numbers at this point in time.
So, if, if I can ask, um, Dr. Brewster, uh, I, I'm a little confused. If a person receives a test for COVID, and that test takes ten days to come back to them with a positive result, are they then in quarantine for four more days? Is it from, is the quarantine from the date they're tested, or the date they receive the test results?
So there's actually two words here, there's the word quarantine and there's the word isolation.
Okay.
If somebody tests positive, uh, we recommend isolation. It's similar to what a quarantine is, but the, the, there's slight, a slight distinction. With isolation, we recommend that people isolate. With isolation, we recommend that people isolate from at least, uh, 10 days from the date of their test or the date their symptoms started. So if they have symptoms, it would be at least 10 days from the date their symptoms started. Uh, and they need to demonstrate that they've had at least three days of no fever without fever-reducing medicine, and their symptoms are getting significantly better. At that point in time, they would be released from isolation. Now, if they got tested, uh, without symptoms, uh, and they tested positive, and they never developed symptoms of COVID-19, but they test positive, they're one of the silent, uh, carriers of this, or silent, um, infections, uh, then, uh, those individuals, they would need to isolate for 10 days from the date of their test. So 10 days from their date of their test. Uh, and we would need to ensure that they have not developed symptoms or fever, uh, during that period of time before they're released from isolation. Now, those are for individuals who've tested positive. For individuals who have, uh, either, uh, symptoms and are waiting for a test result or haven't, uh, chosen to get a test, uh, or for other individuals who are under quarantine because they are close contacts of somebody who tested positive, um, those individuals are, uh, doing quarantine. Uh, and that quarantine, uh, for the close contacts, for example, uh, is a period of 14 days. Because it can take up to 14 days for people to develop symptoms of COVID-19 after they've been exposed to it. And that's why there's a, a difference in the timeframe there. So their period of 14 days starts from their day of last exposure to the person who is ill or positive.
Thank you.
All right, so, you know, the, on top of all the other elements that we're working, we are, we are really, we are coordinating all of our responses on all of our plans based on the real-time best information that we have from, um, Dr. Brewster and the, at the health office down here in St. Mary's, as well as the Maryland Department of Health, which has put, put out a draft of what, of what a protocol might look like, and I imagine that's going to be finalized. And we'll tell you that in the final plan that we put forth to the public, we will have this absolutely and explicitly protocolized, I, if that's a word. You said it first, Dr. Brewster, so I'm, I'm gonna say it's a word. It sounds, it's a good sounding word. That it, that will, so the parents will know exactly what happens when somebody tests positive for COVID. And so employees will know exactly what happens when somebody tests positive for, uh, COVID in, in the health and, in the, in the setting within the school system. Well, with that, I'm gonna go back to the presentation and, and does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Brewster? All right, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back then to the slide. I think this is it. This is it, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, wonderful. So let me restart it.
It's on, it's in the background. Do you see it?
Yeah, it's there, wait. Yeah, it's just, uh, this is, this is the one that we, we have to share, present timeline, there we go. Cancel. I was doing everything well and it was working. Stop share. Let me go back and start share. There we go. Okay, all right. Back to the right one. Okay. So that is, I mean, that's a, that's an incredibly important part. And the quarantine part is the largest, is that we would have, if we bring back people in the current climate that we have with the rate of infection that we have, we would be, um, starting and stopping and sending people home and, you know, what, what does, what does that look like? Putting people in, in risks and then requiring them to quarantine for two weeks. All right, so, um, so when this was originally put together and, and first provided, uh, there were options for return. There really aren't options for return right now, um, in that, uh, you know, we're gonna have to go completely virtual to start. And we'll talk a lot about what that virtual learning looks like. We're gonna talk about that there is, there's a great deal of it self-paced, but there's some real-time, there's some video interaction, there's a lot of stuff. We did an incredible amount of planning for a hybrid classroom where kids come in two days and then they learn virtually for three days. And we alternate and we build in schedules and we only have half-capacity, uh, in the building at all times. Um, I believe that we have to put next to that, um, when determined, safe for face-to-face instruction. So when we feel that it, when we know that it is safe for face-to-face instruction, and we will look to all of the other agencies that determine this work, as well as the Maryland State Department of Education and the governor's office. Um, so all online, we'll talk a little bit about it today. We'll talk a little bit about the platform, Schoology and what that looks like. Um, I will tell you that Schoology, uh, works, uh, well. You can interact with the platform on any device, uh, laptop and iPad, uh, smartphone. When you're actually doing work in the composition and the sharing, it needs to, it really needs to be done on a laptop. But for just the interacting and the video conferencing and the blogging and things like that, it can be done from a smartphone. One of the reasons why we went for this platform was that it, it is the most flexible and can address really all the different elements of connectivity that students, um, engage in, in their, in their lives. Uh, the hybrid, um, again, uh, we've done a lot of work. When it is safe to do so, we have a plan for how we will bring people into the schools in a blended learning environment, um, and it will be phased in. The phases are based on, um, student, student need themselves. We begin first with the kids who desperately need, uh, interaction and face-to-face because they have a, uh, perhaps they have an individualized education plan that can't be appropriately serviced through virtual learning. Or perhaps they, they need a very specific, um, support and educational service such as the kids in our cell program. Um, maybe they're English language learners, uh, maybe they're economically disadvantaged, so they don't have connectivity in their home. All of these things would be the first cohort of kids that we'd be looking to phase into our school when it is safe to do so. Next then, we would look at our kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade, bringing them back because they are new to the, either entirely new to school, or they're new to middle school, or they're new till high school. And then it wouldn't be until the third step that we'd actually be bringing back all the rest of the grades so that all of our students would have the opportunity to attend two days out of five.
Can I interject before you go to the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, so I've heard from three parents who have special needs students, what, two of them were diploma track, one was a certi, the certification track. Um, all three stated that, and I know that we can't go back right now, but they're having a lot of difficulties with the online learning for these students.
Yeah.
I feel that their student has really fa, fallen far behind. Uh, some of them do need speech, OT, PT, a lot of one-on-one, uh, which for these students, it's very difficult to be doing online.
Right.
Um, so with that being said, when it is safe to return, um, I would like to see you entertain the idea of having these students come the four days a week. Not just two and then doing three online. Uh, we need to make sure these students are ready and gonna be productive citizens, um, you know, when they graduate. Uh, the next thing is, I know you stated that, uh, the kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade, because they would be new to the building. Kindergarten's fine, sixth grade's fine. I would, in my opinion, I would like to see the seniors come in first because these seniors, you need to lay eyes on these students. Make sure that they have what they need for graduation. It's critical. You know, this is their last year, um, and, y, you know, some of these students might not have the technology. And I know that we're trying our best to make sure that these students have that. Uh, maybe some don't feel comfortable, uh, sa, you know, trying to call someone up or email saying, you know, I'm having difficulty with this or I need this class. Um, they might do better, you know, one-on-one, you know, seeing someone. But we need to make sure that they are on track and ready for graduation.
Uh, and I absolutely hear, I, I hear you absolutely. And I will tell you that, that has always been the protocol at high schools, is even when we build the master schedule every single year, we start with what do the seniors need first? And we build their schedules first so that they have the courses and the sequence and the time that they need so that they can, there, that's the most high stakes year of, of high school. And we will continue to do exactly that. Right now, we have, that's, that's who our counselors start with. And in fact, we've been talking with the College of Southern Maryland because Dr. Murphy would like to make, um, available, as they are starting virtually, that opportunity for all seniors to, if, instead of taking a high school course, if there is a, uh, is, if there is a similar, uh, College of Southern Maryland course, enroll in that course so that you could, i, in theory, take almost an entire year of college-level course, receive college-level credit as well as our credits. Cause virtual learning could be done, uh, both of those platforms, you, they would, kids could toggle between both. But, um, we actually absolutely hear you. And, and included in that is gonna be for all of our students who are CTE completers, who that is the way that they're gonna earn their diploma. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come up with how we have them meet their requirements for their certification within their pathway program. Because there are some elements of that that can be done virtually and online, but there's a lot of that that is absolutely, must be done in person and, and through the, through the work that they're engaged in. So absolutely, we will, we will amend that to reference the fact that seniors would need to be worked with. They really kind of be, they're in the first step really. They're the ones that are the, are, are, are focused almost immediately. And certainly making sure that they have the access and resources to be able to move through their senior year. So phasing into a hybrid schedule, I think we heard very clearly, um, that that is when it is safe to do so. Uh, you'll see that from the original posting, we have gone back and did TBD. The one thing that we do know is in September, everybody's gonna be virtual and online. When it is appropriate to do so and safe to do so, we would then begin phasing in groups and building towards hybrid instructions and begin with K, six, nine, and, and 12 even before that. Um, ultimately building to the fact that we would at least get to half-capacity and have our kids here two out of, um, five days. Uh, at this point, I would like to turn it over to, is this Dr. Mar? Are you gonna, is this Dr. Mar hopping back on?
Yes, I'm back.
Okay, wonderful.
So.
Sorry. Let me get to the right thing.
Um, uh, first of all, I, I just wanna say that the words I'm gonna sh, share right now actually represent the, the work of the instruction subgroup for the, um, recovery team. And that is led by Dr. Jaffers and Ms. Bachner, um, from the Division of Instruction. And they coordinated this work along with 21 members of that subgroup, um, which included supervisors from instruction, uh, teachers, administrators, and parents as well. Their work has really laid the groundwork for successful online instruction this fall. You've heard mention of the Schoology platform. That platform will be explained a little bit further, uh, next week at the town hall meeting, as Dr. Smith has mentioned. It has both self-paced and interactive instruction embedded. So it's, it's a, a little bit, it's a lot more interactive than what we saw in the spring with edgenuity and Imagine Learning. In fact, this really aligns the classroom instruction to the classroom the students are embedded in and their teacher is, is leading that. Um, I also wanna give, uh, a shout-out to all of the content supervisors and the teachers who have spent the last couple of months preparing all of the coursework, uh, in the Schoology platform so that teachers can then take it forward and plan for their own daily instruction with it. These courses are aligned to the content standards, the Maryland content standards and the rigor of the Maryland content standards. They also are designed to address the instructional gaps as we closed last year and lead into this school year. And as part of it, there may be in some cases, some diagnostic assessments to see where students are and work with them to, um, to, to bridge those gaps. What we saw in the spring with, uh, the school closure was that the online instruction really looked at, um, participation and, and, participation and progress in the online platforms. As we move into this fall, we will have traditional grading based on student performance that is reported regularly, similar to what we see in HAC on the student's progress towards those instructional outcomes. In addition, we are working on processes to ensure that students, if they need their textbook for their class, that we have ways to distribute those textbooks and the materials to students as the school year begins as well. Additionally, uh, we know that using this new platform will have, um, i, it's learning curve for, for, for students. And therefore, we're, we're building, uh, the system's building a, a bevy of online resources and is going to have support available for our students as they work through that. So again, I wanna really thank this team for the work. It is ongoing and, uh, it will continue to grow as the school year begins as well.
Thank you very much, Dr.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
All right, on the, on the bullet regarding the traditional grading on the student performance, if I am not in a classroom, how am I going to take a quiz or a test? Because right now, we have a certain mix of product and process grades for each, you know, on each grade level or, or at middle school and high school. So is that gonna be adjusted? And then if I can't, if it's gonna, if it's not possible to give like a standardized geometry test online through Schoolology, then what is going to take its place? Or, or how is that going to be handled? I think for some of the other subjects, you could have them write research papers to master concepts, things like that. But there's some definite things, math and science, that are not gonna be able to be handled that way.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, ask, Dr. Jaffers and Ms. Bachner are both on this line too, and they can, uh, provide, uh, some further explanation of how that process will work on, on Schoology.
Actually, there's an assessment tool embedded in Schoology, where we are able to, um, do a formative and summative test and assessments with students, um, on the platform itself. So assessments are embedded, um, in each lesson set of Schoology.
Okay, so is the teacher going to, um, have input into what assessment questions are going to be? And keep in mind, like, let's say, if I go back to edgenuity or whatever we used, right? On the algebra or whatever, six accelerated math, whatever it was. I mean, it was terrible. It was like, is it answer A and B? Is it answer A, B and C? Is it A, B, C and D? I mean, it, it just, it created a lot of consternation and stress among the students because they get an answer and they're like, wow, it, could it be these other? And then all the while, like, the little clock is ticking down, you know? So if, I know it was, it was still content that had to be completed, right? But the stakes weren't quite as high in the fourth marking period for a lot of students because they'd already had their baseline grade assigned. You know, their floor was, they already knew what their floor grade was. But now starting new, all over again, I'm just, I think that without very clear explanations, I think that might create a lot of anxiety among our students.
And I'm gonna let Dr. Jaffers talk a little bit about this, but the diff, the big difference in Schoology than we had before and, uh, as generally Imagine Learning is that the teacher is basically the host of this course. Even though we've done the goal for them, they still have the ability to go in and make decisions about assessment questions, add things to it, give feedbacks to students, determine that final grade. They did not have that ability in either Imagine Learning or Edgenuity. And that's one of the reasons we selected this also.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Bailey, just, if I could just, um, you know, you described there in edgenuity is what they call higher level cognitive demand question for multiple choice. So sometime, uh, you know, we, we do have those types of questions and so they are meant to be arduous for the end user. So, um, I'm sorry to hear that there was some consternation with that, um, question. But that's the kind of, those are the kind of questions that, that, um, uh, when we build little tests like that in edgenuity. And again, as Lisa says, Ms. Bachner said, we don't build those tests. They were already pre-built. Uh, that's just to get to higher levels of cognitive demand. Regarding tests now, what, what Ms. Bachner's saying is ac, absolutely correct. The teachers always have the latitude, and they will have the latitude with the Schoology build to, uh, to assess their students in any way that they want to normally, except it would be done on a virtual, online, and that, that's, um, it would be done, may, maybe not, you know, through your paper and pencil submissions, but it's gonna be done through an online submission. Um, and again, that's, that's what we're working through right now. Those, those little practical nuances that we have to, um, mitigate some of the questions that we may have and may encounter, uh, as we move down this pathway.
Okay, no, and, and that, that's, that's the answer that I kinda was expecting to hear. Just that the teachers had more input into what the exam questions were going to be rather than just like preloaded content, which I think is what, is what happened. And then, you know, and I, I just, I think with the interaction between the teachers and the students under this platform is, I think everyone's gonna see a huge difference versus what we, um, uh, saw in the spring. So, thank you.
And I guess that's, the word is to be agile. I think the teacher's gonna have, uh, the, the flexibility and be agile with the course. There may be a couple of things in their lectures that they may not necessarily cover, and they're able to take that test. Uh, and again, the, the teachers are gonna act, really own the. And again, the teachers are going to really own the test and administer their exam questions, much like they always have in the past. It's going to be done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. So since Schoology is self-paced, does that mean students can log in at any time of the day to complete their assignments? Or is there like specific class and login schedule that needs to be followed?
We have an, Nagina, determined sample student schedules. We're working on that at this time. I mean, the platform itself, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Jaffers, I mean, you can log on it at any time, once you have the access code. There may be some times where a teacher says, and as I said, we haven't gotten sample schedules down. We're hoping to show those soon. But, you know, a teacher may say to you, Nagina, I'm going to do a lab demonstration at ten o'clock on Tuesday. It will be recorded, so you can, you could come in at that time or you can see it at a later time that meets your needs. And we're hoping to have some flexibility like that using the system. So if you have a specific meeting with a teacher where they want to do a small group with a certain, I mean, you would have to go real-time with those teachers at that designated time.
And I think we have to be careful with self-paced. I mean, self-paced means, I mean, the teacher's still going to have an expectation, hey, on this day, two days from now, this homework's going to be due. And they're going to have their own calendar within Schoology with the expectations, just like they normally would if they were face-to-face. On any online course, I mean, the self-paced is going to be the turnkey sort of axis that Ms. Bachner was referencing. Maybe they can't get the video at ten AM, but they can maybe access that at three PM. But as far as submissions of assignments go, I believe that's going to, again, be governed and adjudicated by the teacher of record. And they're the ones that are going to own the web and the admin flow of these assignments.
And Nagina, because I think this is an important question, the teachers have a great deal of flexibility in this. They are, they are the masters of these courses and of their courses. And just like in a traditional program, they receive a curriculum map with a pacing guide and assessments that are built into that, they'll have those similar, they'll have those similar things on the Schoology platform. And what they'll get to say is, on, for this class and this lesson, kids are going to, I would like to do a whole-class lesson at this time, and I need my students to, you know, to zoom in or Google Meet in, whatever, whichever platform we're using. Or they may say, I need to meet with these five students to go over either to accelerate a lesson or to remediate a lesson or reteach something. Or they may have to have individual conferences with students. Or they may do, you know, they may do a class period and they'll record themselves and then upload something or do a screencast so that kids who weren't able to come in and join during the session would be able to then access that screencast. The teachers have a great deal of flexibility to run their course. So I agree with Dr. Jaffers. Saying it's self-paced is a little bit, you know, a little bit misleading because it is self-paced, but there's an expectation that students are going to be involved in interacting with the teacher when the teacher is scheduling those interaction times for them. Thank you.
I have another question now.
Okay. Hey, just for the record, this whole discussion of Schoology, that's why we have a Town Hall schedule for the twenty-ninth, is that at that point, we'd be able to do like an interactive session where you can actually, we can go into the platform and show you what it will look like for a parent, a student, and a teacher.
Right, this will be very quick, though.
Yes.
So you can build your Town Hall next week.
Yes.
As a parent question.
Yes.
So in, prior to this, we had HAC, and all of the parents could go through, and you could see what assignments were loaded or not loaded, depending on how timely the teacher loaded them.
Yes.
Into HAC. So parents, and I know the answer to this, but just so everyone who's listening now understands, they will still have that same ability to go in and track student assignments. So just because we're going to an online virtual platform does not necessarily mean that you, as a parent, are automatically cut out of your student's instruction and classwork.
No, as a, as a, as a parent, you're going to be able to see all of the instructional materials that are being covered in the classroom, access to video, and see your child's work as it's submitted. And which then goes back to a grade, you know, an overall grade for the course that's embedded within the course. Parents will, parents will have more information about what's going on in their children's classroom and instruction than they ever had.
Right. See, it was quick.
Okay. All right, well, lovely. Let's go to the, let me change my view, then back to the presenter. And let's go to the next slide, which I believe Dr. Montgomery will lead us through.
Yes, I am, Dr. Smith, thank you. So the Services for Students Subcommittee was led by Ms. Cheryl Long, who's the Director of Student Services, and Mr. Scott Surbiak, who's the Director of Special Education. And they too had a very large committee of people and subgroups working on each one of their areas. Because the, the things that they were doing, the services for students that they addressed were special ed IEP students, 504, they looked at attendance, they looked at the health services, and also the behavioral and mental health supports that we would need to provide for students online. So starting first with the specialized instruction IEP 504 students, the Schoology platform is going to allow us to deliver interventions on this virtual platform. And we weren't able to do that as very easily before, especially now because we're going to have the virtual conferencing available. So Schoology allows for that. IEP services will also be able to be delivered virtually. So for example, speech-language services. And although nothing is taking the place of having the face-to-face instruction with an occupational therapist or a physical therapist or a speech therapist, we will be able to deliver services to students in a virtual fashion. Every special education student is going to be given a diagnostic assessment to begin the next school year so that we can specifically identify what recovery services are needed because of the school closure. We want to just make sure that we're assessing all of our students, all of our special ed students, and figuring out where they are and how we can start closing gaps. With respect to attendance, we are able to take attendance, of course, in school, but also in virtual environments. And that's going to look, that's going to look very, it's going to look a little bit different because teachers are going to have options. So it can be as simple as looking at logins. They'll be able to look at logins. They'll be able to look at different assignments that are completed and whether they want teachers, whether they want students to be, to have things completed. Or they'll be able to, you know, have students signing at a specific time during the classes. The whole name of the game is that we want them to be able to, you know, kind of monitor that we do have students attending school on a regular basis, whether it's, you know, in this virtual environment. So we will have accountability. And I think that that's an important thing to remember here for attendance. With respect to health services, the first thing that they looked at were the health suites. And we want to make sure that we, and each one of our health suites, were looking at separating the areas so that they had a separate area for routine needs. For example, if a student needed to come down and get a Band-Aid or some of those just typical things that kids come down to the health suite for, that they would have a separate area versus students who were sick. So we will be making those separations right away in our health suites. The Health Services Subcommittee also looked at health education, and we've talked about this quite a bit already. We are developing lessons that we are going to put on the Schoology platform that we want every student to go through this lesson about health education, teaching them about handwashing and face coverings and maintaining a healthy school environment, you know, healthy-stake distances. So all the things that we would have to do to maintain that healthy school environment, we plan to start off the year by educating all of our students right away. And we'll make sure that it's age-appropriate, so high school versus middle school versus elementary, that they're all going to get that same education. It's been really important, especially on that. We've worked very closely with the Health Department on all of our subcommittees, but particularly on this one for Health Services. And we've collaborated with the St. Mary's County Health Department to make sure that they're keeping up to date with any new information that we're learning about the current pandemic and what we need to do in our schools, that we're keeping people safe. Mental health services, we are developing, there's social-emotional lessons, and they can be self-guided lessons that students can go through virtually using the Schoology platform. And we also have the ability to have counselor-facilitated lessons. So since we are going to have our teachers that are going to be able to interact virtually with students in a virtual environment, we're also going to have our counselors that are going to be able to run social-emotional things for students. So whether it be individuals or small groups, we're going to be able to continue with those services that we typically offer during a school year. And the same thing goes for mental health and counseling supports in a virtual environment. We're still looking at all of our tier intervention services. Tier one, looking at school-wide things, that lessons that we do for everybody. Tier two, looking at what we can do for a smaller number of students that are not responding to tier one. And then same thing for tier three services, where it's for very specific individuals meeting specific needs. And we plan to be able to deliver all of those things in the virtual environment as well. So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Smith?
Nope. I have nothing.
Any questions on that, from anyone? Okay.
All right, thank you, Dr. Montgomery. And with this, I think we go to Dr. Walker. Dr. Walker, are you on the line with us?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Echo my appreciation for the many great minds that have been involved on committees and subcommittees and subcommittees of subcommittees to try to come up with creative solutions and ideas for some of the issues that are facing us. And I think we've, I think we've come up with a lot of creative ideas and options. Particularly on the Supporting Services side, we're planning for a continuum of scenarios from no student in school to all students back in school. So as for each group, it's a complicated process. In the area of transportation, that subgroup has developed a number of scenarios that utilize different seating capacity options, multiple routes, as Dr. Smith mentioned earlier. How those multiple routes might impact daily school bus arrival and afternoon departure times. What the expectations might be for bus drivers and bus attendants and students while they're on the bus, obviously including cleaning protocols that would be in place to keep the buses safe. One of our subcommittees dealt with the clean and, the topic of clean and healthy, which is obviously a huge, a huge task. But they were focused on establishing proactive approaches to cleaning and maintaining safe facilities based on recommended cleaning practices. And we much appreciate the involvement of Health Department staff on our committees as well. So some examples here, disinfection of high-touch surfaces, handling air quality, increasing ventilation and airflow in the buildings as recommended by the CDC and other groups. And maintaining water quality. And just so everyone knows, I know members, you're aware, but even when students are not in school, we continue to test water, to flush the water systems, to change air filters in the HVAC units. So that type of regular maintenance has continued, even though students and staff, most staff, have been out of school buildings since March. But we continue to look at how we can improve in all of those areas to follow, follow the guidelines that are in place. Obviously, and as a response plan to deal with potential illness in students and staff, the Clean and Healthy subgroup has documented how those responses might occur in collaboration with the Health Department staff. In terms of food service, again, complicated scenarios based on any different situation or stage that we're in in terms of students returning. But we are going to implement pre-order, an opportunity for families to pre-order meals. They can pre-order online. If students are in school, they can pre-order in their class in the morning. So if they pre-order and they're in school, they can pick up in school. If they're pre-order, if they pre-order and are not in school, it can be picked up outside of schools at designated pickup sites and times. And we're working on how we can do, include multiple days of meals so that students won't have to come, or families won't have to come and pick up every day. And if we're in a fully virtual learning environment, which it looks like we might start, looks like we'll start that way, we will reestablish our food distribution sites. You recall, we did four sites starting in March. We will likely increase the number of sites that we establish for food distribution once we head back to school in August. And finally, athletics and extracurricular activities. You know, it's been publicized, and we've had many students participating. We started outdoor-only summer conditioning activities with safeguards in place, like physical distancing and masks were appropriate. That began on July thirteenth. We're working on multiple scenarios. If athletics are allowed to begin at any point, we're working on scenarios where that can occur, addressing issues like competition schedules, seasonal start dates. So maybe fall sports move later into the, into the fall or winter. Spring and winter sports will be adjusted as well. If that would happen, compressed seasons, so maybe not so many games for different sports. Modified seasonal play. Perhaps we only play against teams in St. Mary's County if we, if we do go back to athletics. Versus a typical schedule, which has us playing out-of-county teams and out-of-region teams sometimes. And limitations on gatherings, obviously, to limit the number of people in a particular location for a particular purpose.
So with that, are there any questions for Dr. Walker? How about that technology plan there, Dr. Walker?
Yes, sir, I'll take a stab at this one also.
Yeah.
You know, we are working hard to provide as many machines as possible as soon as possible to distribute to students. Conservatively, we've estimated that we should have about four thousand seven hundred laptops ready for our secondary students, five hundred laptops ready for our elementary students by August fifteenth. That still gives us a couple of weeks before, or a week at least, before we'll start online. So we'll have more time to do that. I got an update this morning, and we're at about twenty-five hundred laptops ready for distribution. Our techs and computer specialists are working every day to prepare these machines. And as Dr. Smith said earlier, we expect to get a large number of machines in September, which we will be able to quickly distribute because of the work our IT folks have done on the backend to allow smooth distribution and the support you've provided through funding and purchases over the past six months to get our network ready for this type of capacity. Coordination of the distribution of the laptops will be handled by school administrators at each site. And I just want to remind everybody, until, until a student gets a device, if they have a personal device, those can always be used to access online course material. And we've put some minimum device specifications here, whether it's a laptop or an iPad or an Android device or an iPhone. Basically, any laptop that can run Windows ten is capable of accessing the Schoology platform. Same is true for iOS eleven and Android version six. And you can see the supportive browsers from Schoology's website that work to, that work effectively to handle the Schoology platform. And we are working on a survey to provide to families electronically and in hard copy to get a better handle on specifically who needs machines, who needs access, so that we can target those individuals early with the equipment that we have available.
Can I have, can I just add a comment on the, on the survey for home technology? I think when we've sent them out before, the question has been very broad, like, do you have access to internet? That's not going to work because, I mean, I have access to internet, but it is not high-speed, it is not capable of handling multiple, you know, devices at the same time. So I think we probably need to just be a little bit more specific because that's where, that's where a lot of people fall off, is, you know, there's a difference between saying ninety percent of the county has access to internet, but of that ninety percent, forty-five of it is junk, so.
Well, and the, the survey that will go out is, is going to, is not going to be an anonymous anybody. It's going directly to a parent to communicate directly back to the school what their connection is at their home, and then the number of devices that they would require so that each person in their home would have their own personal device. And we're, and we're, we're a little bit behind on this. And this is why we've been talking for months and months about the fact that we need about three or four million dollars' worth of technology purchased to be able to, to be able to go to one-to-one so that everybody would have a computer in your home. We're not there. So parents, you need to recognize that, you know, you might get a device in August. You might get a device when they're delivered in September. Any additional money that we get, we're going to be buying more devices. But if there's anything you could be doing right now to prepare for the opening of school, you might want to go out and buy your child a computer. And if you don't have internet connection at your home, you might want to think about how you go about doing that. how you go about doing that. And if you have internet connection at your home and it's a slower speed, you might want to, you know, reach out to see if that can be increased. Because high-speed internet is going to be a key component to the success of virtual learning of our children.
Will you still be, uh, printing out, uh, copies of packets if students do not have internet connection?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to provide hard copies for that. And that's, and that's one of the reasons why this, everybody learns virtually isn't, it, it's going to be a real struggle in this county because there's some people that cannot connect to the internet. So it's our responsibility to provide them something. So how will we, how will we provide that? What will that, what will that look like? And so, uh, that's, you know, that's our, that's a, that's a real question that does have to be answered since we're going to start with everybody going virtually. All right. It goes back to me now, yay. The Chesapeake Public Charter School, they are slated to open August 12th. And they have already presented their plan to all of their students and stakeholders and parents. And they're opening, they're using the same Schoology platform that we are. Their teachers have been working on, uh, building all the content for the Schoology platform. That's what they will be using when they open on the 12th and they're going to follow our lead. So if we say that we are virtual for the first marking period, they too will be virtual for the first marking period. If we say we are virtual for the first semester, they too will be virtual for the first, um, semester. And they have a comprehensive plan that has all of the similar things met as far as how they're going to be interacting and providing support for students in a virtual environment. The last slide before we kind of forecast where we're going from here is relative to staff. All of our employees and all employees in St. Mary's County, in the state of Maryland, in the United States, um, are eligible for Families First Coronavirus Relief Act leave. None of our staff have had to use that leave yet because we provided an opportunity for everybody to move forward all throughout the fall. If you haven't read up on it, you need to read up on it. There are, uh, one of the, one of the leave, one of the, uh, one of the elements of leave is if you're, if schools are not open and childcare is not available for your children, you have access to up to 12 weeks of leave at two-thirds pay. I, we absolutely hear every single teacher who says, I have children in my home, I can't go to, I can't, I can't go into the work site. That's going to be the same thing that every single parent in St. Mary's County is going to say. So, uh, we, we do need to have that active conversation. And that's why we have a childcare subcommittee of, of, of system stakeholders that has, that has started meeting and will be working through what we can do for childcare, um, because we recognize that people are going to work. And if they are going to work and schools aren't open, who is going to then be responsible for their children? For everybody who is immunocompromised or has any of the factors that put them at a greater risk for contracting COVID, the Americans with Disability Act, ADA accommodations, are available to modify your workspace to make it as, as safe and appropriate as it possibly can be, given the qualifications and the need for your particular job. All of these will continue. So the FFCRA continues, ADA continues, our childcare subcommittee is working. As of last week or two weeks ago, when I did a video for our staff, I said that for the month of July, the people who could telework, can telework half of the time, but half of the time, they have to come into their office because we need to get back to some normalcy. And all of the 12-month staff who can't telework, they are maintenance and operations or IT staff that's working to format all of these laptops or, you know, they're, they come to work and they have been coming to work all of this month. Our plan was, and I put a little asterisk there, was that in the first week of August, 12 and 11-month staff would come back to work 100% of the time. Although if you have something that makes you eligible for ADA, we'll take care of that, we'll work that. If you have something from the Families First Corona Relief, we will take care of that. If you have childcare, we would, we were working on that. But if you don't fall into one of those categories, you would be expected to return to the work site, recognizing that the work site can provide you a safe and appropriate environment where we are doing, going back to those face coverings and the hand washing and the hand sanitizing and the physical distancing and all of those elements. We're going to review all of that based on a virtual start of school. All of those recommendations are based on building towards bringing kids back into the building and putting kids on buses and what that looks like. If we're going to be virtual for a predetermined set of time, the first marking period, the first semester, then we can go back and look at all of our staff so that we can then hit the last bullet, which was originally planned that all teachers would come back to work on August 24th. We have incredible people working on behalf of our kids every single day. And for all of those who took the time to write letters for public comment, we absolutely hear you. We hear the challenges that you have and we hear the, the anxiety that all of this has created. That being said, we have a responsibility to deliver instruction to 18,000 students. And we have to do that to the very best of our ability. And if we're not going to do in-person, we're going to have to do an incredible job with virtual education, which means we are going to have to make sure that we interact with our kids and provide them the support that they need daily. And the only place that I can guarantee that people have access to high-speed fiber internet connection is at our schools. And the only place that I can guarantee that people have a very large whiteboard where they can project their entire class up and see every single one of their students is in a classroom. The only place where I know that I can guarantee the workspace isn't going to be compromised by somebody else in it in some fashion is in the school. The only place we can give you the technology support when something doesn't work or the professional support when we have questions about how best to do things or the social emotional support that we gather from one another as we're working through the most challenging thing we've ever faced in education is within a school. So I need everybody to know that we will absolutely take a look at all of the things that are complicating people returning to the workplace. But where we're going to be able to do our work best is going to be in a, in a school. And in your classroom and teachers, you know, your classroom, it would be your classroom. You would determine who is in it and who is not in it. And that classroom, I guarantee, is bigger than the majority of spaces you probably have available to you in your own personal home. We're going to continue this conversation. We're not going to make any decision that compels somebody to be in an unsafe situation. We don't want anybody to have to make a decision about their professional livelihood pitted against the safety of themselves, their family or their children. That's, that is absolutely not what we intend to do. But we also have to recognize that the school system has a purpose and a mission, and that is to educate kids the very best that we can. And so we all have to work together to have that become the reality that we go forth. Our parents are going to absolutely be looking for us to provide the very best learning experience that we can. And virtual, no matter how much time and energy, is a pale substitute for face-to-face interaction. And for all of our students, 18,000 of them who are looking forward, although anxious to come back with one another and reconnect, we have to recognize that's going to be a huge toll, especially if we tell children they aren't going to have any return to school until 2021. That is a long time away. So, um, staff reporting onsite, we are working on it and we're working on it with, with ISMAC and, and with SMAS. And there's a collaborative conversation that's going on every single day. And please give us the time and space to, to work through what is the very best way to balance everybody's needs. So, uh, next steps, there, uh, next steps will be the town hall, uh, next, uh, Wednesday at 4:00 PM. That town hall is going to be completely focused on what the virtual learning environment will look like, as well as when we would consider, uh, return to some kind of a hybrid or bringing people in. And it will be based on whatever is shared later today from Dr. Salmon and the governor. But that will be the best look at what we are forecasting the, the open of school to look like. It will follow with a direct letter to every single parent with a survey asking for very specific information about the, uh, the, the environment of your home as far as access to the internet and, uh, your ability to provide a device, um, so that we can see, so we can make sure that everybody has a device at the opening of schools and then backfill as we are able to order equipment as we go through the, the opening of school. As always, uh, the more you're informed, the more you know, the better we're, you're able to make decisions, the better you're able to, to move, to move forward. I don't know, for those people who've been watching since, uh, we started at, at nine, it's been, it's been an emotional morning and it's very emotional hearing from, um, our ISMAC president and, and hearing our heartfelt words from, from our employees and then recognize that we also have, um, so many other people who want to give us direct input on the decisions. This is, um, the most difficult moment we've had in public education, certainly in my experience. And how we handle it and move forward and work together may very well define what the future of public education looks like. And I know that that's a pretty large statement, but, um, this isn't going to be the, COVID is, is here right now, what after COVID? If we are going to, if this is going to be the response, we shut down for everything that happens and COVID is extremely, extremely challenging. We might have a vaccine for this, but what comes next? What's the next strain? What's the next, what's the next, the, the problems that have been faced by bringing thousands of children together every single day aren't going to go away when we have a vaccine for one thing. So, um, there are going to be a lot of very large conversations that, that, that are, that are happening and we all need to make sure that we are, um, really engaging, spending the time to know as much as we possibly can and looking at a problem from all angles to come up with the very best solution. So with that, that's the end of my recovery presentation.
All right, does anyone have any final questions?
Just, that's not questions, just a comment.
Mary, Jim, do you have any questions, Nagina?
No, I don't have any questions. I was just going to make a few comments.
Are we finished with final comments?
Okay, then let's roll with comments. Kathy?
Oh, okay. You want me to say them now?
Uh, sure.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you were going to do questions and then go comments.
Yeah, no one has any questions, so we're ready to roll.
Okay, thank, I'm, I just wanted to say, you know, this was a great presentation. It covered a lot of information and I want to thank all the staff people, um, who contributed to it. The state, the state superintendent and the governor will have another press conference today and I hope everybody tuned in. Uh, the reopening of the school is the decision of the state superintendent and concert with the governor, not the Board of Education. And we can't open school fully for those who want us to because we're still in stage two. And our number one priority is the safety of our students, staff and bus drivers. And our recovery plan will be published on August 14th. It will be on our website. The next virtual town hall will be on July 29th, where parents and students can learn more about Schoolology. Everybody need to stay informed and get the best information possible on the school system website. There is a tremendous amount of information there, which can answer questions. And Human Resources, uh, have frequently asked questions and they have links and you can go there and read about, um, the Recovery Act, so you can find out what your rights are. We're going to open with online learning and three-fourths of the students in the state of Maryland where they have reported will be doing virtual learning. Now I want to thank the recovery planning team and the committee chairs and the co-chairs for all that they're doing, the 90, uh, school staff members, community members and students. A giant thank you to you. And thank you to everyone at SMCPS who are working hard during this unprecedented time in public education. We've never had a time like this, but what we do will probably determine how we will do education in the future. As the superintendent said, we will probably get a vaccine for COVID, but what's going to happen next? But we'll have to be ready for it and they're laying the groundwork for any uncertainties or any unexpected things that will happen years down the road. It might be another 20 years, 15 years or 10 years, but the groundwork is, uh, being laid. So I want to thank my board members too and everybody's working hard, just everybody in the county pulling together. So looking forward to the town hall meeting and thank you superintendent, Ms. for all that you're doing. And it's been a different kind of summer for you, for you, this summer. You work hard anyway, but you're working extra hard right now, getting things ready. So thank you all.
Jim, Nagina, do you have anything?
Is that for me, Karen?
Sure.
Is Dr. Brewster still, still on?
No, she had to, she had to go off, she was doing an interview.
Okay, well, uh, I just have a, a, a comment. I've been listening for the last week to a radio, uh, local radio host and he's been talking about, uh, the local school systems around DC, uh, not so much St. Mary's County. He had a physician, uh, that made a very provocative statement, almost incredulous, that according to the CDC, I'm going by memory, in the state of California, for K through nine, there wasn't one single, uh, COVID-19 case in the students. And he said, uh, in the whole nation, I believe, there was less than 100. So this doctor was arguing that, uh, we, it, that we really need to bring the kids back to school, that they're safer in school than they are maybe at home. And, uh, I just thought, I thought the comments were very, very, very interesting. I don't know if the data is correct or not. But that might be some argument down the road about the statistics. Maybe Dr. Jaffers could help.
Well, statistics.
Uh, on whether or not children are contracting, uh, uh, this disease, notwithstanding, of course, uh, parents and other loved ones with the children. That's all I got.
Right, I guess, and, and to that point, Jim, I guess, you know, we have to follow the guidance that's put out by the state and the county. So regardless of what everyone is saying on the talk shows and everything like that and, you know, all the anecdotes that they are adding into the conversation, in the end, we have to follow what the state tells us that we need to do, so.
Of course.
Well, and I would, so, so just specifically for everybody watching at home, if you type in St. Mary's County Health Department, you can go to their website, you click on the COVID link and it will tell you the, as of the most recent information. So as of, uh, the, today, we've got 814 confirmed cases. It breaks it down male to female, it breaks it down by race, ethnicity, it breaks it down by age. So in St. Mary's County specifically identified and confirmed, zero to nine, we've had 24 confirmed cases of COVID. From 10 to 19, we've had 63. So in St. Mary's County, we've had 87 confirmed cases of COVID amongst approximate school-aged children for the most part. And that's with schools being closed and kids not having any organized thing that gets them in contact with, with one another. I've been watching that number in particular and where we've seen the greatest increases is between the spread of 10 to 29. So that's that group that's going out and, and interacting with one another. The map shows you where all the cases are, the sites, and then it shows you where we are as far as the progression. And so, um, we closed schools back when we had no cases. And so we are now at 814 and that line And so we are now at 814 and that line, as one can see, has, is just, it's, it's not, it's not flattening. It's not a dramatic. I mean, some of these have seemed much more dramatic, but this is with us, social distancing and schools closed.
Very good.
Nagina, do you have anything, a comment?
I want to say thank you to all of you who are working so hard to make sure that we as students are receiving a quality education while being sa- as safe as possible. And it's a very hard year for everyone, but hopefully we can be stronger by the end of it.
Thank you very much, Nagina.
No comments?
Kathy?
As has been said, it is the state superintendent and the governor who will provide us with, uh, information on when we can begin to bring students back into the building. Um, and as that starts to happen, Dr. Brewster from the St. Mary's County Health Department will be, um, a big part of determining what that will look like. But at the end of the day, um, while there are some boards of education in the state who have voted on a plan moving forward, um, there, there is great question as to whether or not a local board has the authority or if that belongs to the superintendent. And when you look at the responsibility of the board, we vote on the calendar. We determine what the count, when the students will start, when they'll end, what their holidays are going to be. Um, but how that calendar is operationalized is the duty of the superintendent. You've heard us all asking questions, making comments so that the superintendent knows what our thoughts are on, um, returning to school. Um, and from a medical perspective, for those who don't know, uh, I was a former critical care nurse. So I've taken care of everything from premature infants up through, um, end of, you know, all through adults. Um, the difference in this virus as compared to Ebola or H1N1 or SARS is the extreme transmissibility, the extreme contagious nature of this virus and the lasting effects it can have on many people who, who, um, who, uh, have the disease. So, um, I certainly know that there will be pandemics in the future. Will it come back to looking like this? There's no way of knowing. Um, but the school system is very interconnected with everything else. The challenges that staff face in figuring out how to safely and securely bring everybody back into buildings to start learning again. Um, I don't know when we're ever going to get back to what normal was. And, um, so we do, all just have to, I think, do our part to, um, to wear masks um, as uncomfortable as they can be. I've, you know, I've worn a mask for 12 hours in an, in an isolation room. So it can be done. It's not fun, but it can be done. Um, and, and, and washing hands, just extreme good hand washing, taking those simple hygienic steps to make sure that, um, you're protected and, and anyone else around you is protected. So, um, hats off to the system for, um, for reaching out to so many stakeholders to have them be part of the conversation about what this will look like moving forward. And, and we're just going to have to take baby steps, truly.
Okay, and I'll just end with, um, you know, it is a very complete plan. Everyone keep in mind, it can be adjusted based on what happens this afternoon with, um, with the, with the press conference. Um, and I think at the heart of it, everyone who is working on all of these committees and groups has the best interest of everyone in the forefront of their decision-making. And I would challenge anyone who says differently to prove it to me. Because in all the conversations that I've had, um, with Dr. Smith practically on a daily basis, if not more, um, it has never been anything other than what is best for staff and students and the people that we employ and the overall community. And I think, um, his interaction and cabinet's interaction with the health department um, in order to make sure that everything is, you know, safe and the, you know, and I, I 100% agree with you. I think that, you know, our school buildings, when they do open, will much, will be much safer than Lowe's or Target or, you know, the grocery store. So, um, I just, I thank everyone for all the work that they've been doing and for the countless of sleepless nights that have happened, um, since March 13th.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, our next board ma- meeting will be on August 12th at 9:00 AM. We're going back to our regular times, so, uh, executive session will start at 8:00 and we are adjourned.